You guys aren't ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Are we on? Hey, Marcy?
Yeah.
Are we on, so we can, are we ready to go? Okay, are you, can you hear me? Out there? Hello, everybody? Okay, welcome to our council meeting tonight. And the first thing we're going to do is call our meeting to order by our city clerk. Or I'm gonna call it to order, our city clerk is gonna do our roll call, sorry.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
The next thing we're going to have, a pledge of allegiance and an invocation by Nancy Jones, who's a retired teacher. We want to thank her for coming tonight. And if you'll, we'll pledge allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time of inspiration with you, thank you for turning me on. This invocation will include "The Collet for Club Women," which was written over 100 years ago by Mary Stewart, which our Women's Club of Vista and women's clubs around the country share at every meeting. Let us take a few moments together to reflect on our lives, in our world, and be grateful. Thank you Almighty God for the beauty of our world and our community. Thank you for rain that greens up our hills and waters our gardens for us. Thank you for the children, who are our hope and our future. Thank you, God, for the opportunities we have to serve others. Thank you for those who serve in the military and their families here at home. Watch over them all at this joyful time of year. Thank you, God, for this season of miracles that we can celebrate with our families and friends, the miracle of Hanukkah and the miracle of Christmas, and the collet. Keep us, oh God, from pettiness. Let us be large in thought and word indeed. Let us be done with fault finding and leave off self-seeking. May we put away all pretense and meet each other face to face without self-pity and without prejudice. May we never be hasty in judgment and always generous. Let us take time for all things, make us to grow calm, serene, gentle. Teach us to put into action our better impulses, straightforward and unafraid. Grant that we may realize that it is the little things that create differences, that in the big things of life we are at one. And may we strive to touch and to know the great common human heart of us all. And, oh God, let us forget not to be kind. Thank you. I'll ask for the approval of the agenda by our city manager, Rita Geldert.
Thank you, Mayor. We would, the staff would like to pull C-16 for discussion. The rest of the agenda is, there are no changes, additions or deletions.
Okay. We didn't have any closed session today, so our attorney won't be giving a report on that. But we do have, Captain Scott Russell is going to introduce Lieutenant Mehran for us. No, he's not going to do that. Okay. We have a new lieutenant, and he will be coming at another meeting to be introduced. Then the next thing, we have our, some presentations, and so I'm going to, I think I'd like to ask my whole council to come down. We're going to have certificates for our incoming and outgoing commissioners, and also proclamation for our Moonlight Cultural Foundation, and then a proclamation about a day without a bag. So we're going to come down and do that. Okay, the first thing we're going to do, our present, our council, our commission, and the first commission is our Redevelopment Project Area Committee Appreciation. So I'm going to call each one up individually. We'd just like to thank them for their service on the commission. And the first person that served on that commission was Mario Correio. Thank you, Mario. Thank you. I don't know how we can, you want to, do you want to go, how about if we go, want to go around here? Let's do this. It's easier to shake hands. You got it? Okay. Okay. Thanks, Mario. Second certificate of appreciation is Brooks Kavanaugh. Where's Brooks? Thank you, Brooks.
Thank you, it was an honor. Ladies first.
Ladies first. These are, these are in recognition of exceptional service to the community since April 2008 they've served on this commission. The third certificate of appreciation is to Laura Hill. Is Laura here? Here's your, here's your certificate. Thank you. This one is to Marcia Holland. Is Marcia here? I didn't see Marcia tonight. I don't see her. Okay, then Dave Lowen is the next, our next person. Thank you, Dave. Here's a certificate for you. This next certificate is a certificate of an appointment. It's an unscheduled traffic commission appointment. It's to Mike Woods. Is Mike here? There he is. He's been appointed to serve on our traffic commission from November 8th, 2011 through June 30th, 2013. Congratulations. Here's your certificate. Our next certificate appointments are to our Centro Vista Business Improvement District Advisory Board, and the first one goes to John Elisi. Is John here? I didn't see him come in, so he's, apparently he's not here. The second one is Maureen Barak here. Is Maureen here? Thanks, Maureen. Here's your certificate. This advisory board has been appointed to serve effective November 8th and for a term ending June 30th, 2013. And our next person is Kim Olinger. Congratulations, Kim. There you go. Next is Brad Peterson. See, there he is. Hey, Brad. Congratulations and thank you. Our next certificate goes to Kent Schuman. Is Kent here? There he is. Hi, Kent. Thank you. There you go. Our next person is DeeDee Timmons. Congratulations to you. Thank you for serving. Our next one are youth commissioners that are appointed to our commissions. And the first one is Tanner Winninghoff. He's appointed to serve on our Crime and Substance Abuse Prevention Commission. Is Tanner here? I didn't see him. The next one is Annalysia Campos. The kids aren't here tonight. She's, I'm, the served, appointed to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission, as is Luke Spencer. Is Luke here? Congratulations. There's your certificate of appointment. Emily's going to be serving on our planning commission. There you go. Janelle's also going to be serving on our planning commission for the next year. Wyatt, is it Elling? Did I pronounce that right? Wyatt's going to be serving on our Public Arts Commission. Congratulations. There you go. There's your certificate. You missed Frank. Got to get everybody. You got to get everybody. Okay. Alex Mills, is Alex here? Alex is going to serve on our traffic commission. Congratulations. There you go. Kelly Gira. Kelly here? Kelly's serving on our youth commission. Congratulations. There you go. Stephanie also serving on the youth commission. Rachel Menkes. Is it Menkes? How did, how did, did I pronounce that right? How do you pronounce your last name? Menkes? Oh, Mix. She's also serving on our youth commission. Rachel White. Is Rachel here? I don't see Rachel. Okay. And that's all of the ones on the, that's all of our commission, actually, all of our commissioners. So thank them all for doing that, and I give them all the big hand. So the Moonlight Amphitheater's going to make a presentation first, and then we'll, shall we, do we have to sit down while they do that? Is it a long?
No.
No? Yeah? Okay. Okay, so the Moonlight Amphitheater's going to make a presentation. Who's going to do that presentation? Anybody? Art Barter, Mr. Art Barter's going to make a presentation.
As you know, last year, the council, the city came to us and asked for some additional funding last year, and we raised the bar with the foundation and said we'd come and help any way we could. We're here tonight to let you know that that campaign last year was successful. We not only met the goal, but we exceeded the goal. And we're here to, as we say, pass the funds on to the appropriate folks to take care of our promise. As you know, I'm fortunate to lead a very, very passionate board at the foundation. Very passionate donors, supporters, sponsors, patrons, all the way down the line. We could not have done that without all that help from all those folks. And so, we're fortunate to be here tonight to present this to you. We're thrilled with the Moonlight. We love the venue. We hope that the venue never changes. We're here in a goal to make sure that we fill up that hillside. And if you've attended any of our charity events, we want to create tree people up there, to where there isn't any other room to sit except for in the trees. All right? That's my goal. So we're ecstatic tonight to be able to present to you with two checks. One for $300,000 to meet our commitment. We have a second check for an additional $20,000 to support actors and orchestra subsidies. We've also agreed to help out the ABO this year with an initial $15,000 worth of funding. So the total funding that we've provided to the city this year totals out $535,000.
Do you want to stay here while I read the proclamation? I think that's important.
Get back here.
Come on back here, all of you guys. We have, we have more business. Okay, I'm going to read the proclamation here, because I think it's important. And thank you so much for raising that money. It's amazing. You all are amazing. So we're so supportive of the Moonlight. Love it. So here's the proclamation. It says, "Whereas the Moonlight Cultural Foundation has served as a supportive, reliable, and physically responsible nonprofit foundation in the City of Vista since its formation in 1975, the Moonlight Cultural Foundation has promoted the City of Vista's cultural arts program, Moonlight Stage Productions, with unrelenting passion for over 30 years. Whereas the Moonlight Cultural Foundation's youth outreach program reaches into the hearts and minds of the City of Vista's youth to teach, encourage, and expand the exposure to performing arts in their lives. Whereas the Moonlight Cultural Foundation has fostered and maintained a donor base of over 350 individual donors in support of cultural arts in the City of Vista, the Moonlight Foundation has developed trusted relationships and sponsorships from local businesses, and marketing support provided by the Moonlight Cultural Foundation has been a key component in bringing focus and patronage to the City of Vista and to its cultural arts programs. Whereas in 2009, the Moonlight Cultural Foundation completed a successful capital campaign raising $675,000 for the purchase of sound and lighting equipment for the City of Vista's permanent Moonlight Stage House. And for the period spanning July 2010 to June 2011, for the first time in the foundation's history, the Moonlight Cultural Foundation reached over $1 million in giving and support in a single fiscal year. And whereas the Vista City Council is honored to accept a check, actually, two checks, for $300,000 from the Moonlight Cultural Foundation in support of the cultural arts program for the current fiscal year, whereas the mayor and the city council sincerely appreciates the generous support of the Moonlight Cultural Foundation and encourages all Vistans to support the Moonlight Foundation and the Moonlight Stage Productions. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council do hereby proclaim Wednesday, December 14th, that's tomorrow, as Moonlight Cultural Foundation Day in the City of Vista. So congratulations to all of you for that." I have one other thing I want to just read here, that, this is quite done. I just wanted to recognize Art Barter for, at this time. I know you're, I know he doesn't like us to do that, but Art is the president of the Moonlight Cultural Foundation and is one of the most influential members of our community who works tirelessly supporting arts in our city, all without looking for recognition. Over the years, Art has set in motion successful funding efforts through corporate sponsorships and golf tournaments for the Moonlight Amphitheater. His support, dedication, and guidance at the Moonlight Foundation have enabled the Moonlight Amphitheater to maintain a significant cultural arts program for all patrons, arts of the arts, to enjoy. So, Art, we are deeply grateful for your unwavering commitment to the Moonlight Amphitheater and for your visionary planning. The latest donation from the Moonlight Cultural Foundation will enable our 2012 summer seasons venue to be a top lineup and will serve as a lasting legacy for Kathy Braunbacker's final season before her retirements. We're so indebted to you. Thank you so much, Art. Thank you so much. Wait, wait, no, don't leave, you guys. We have two more. This is, this is for Dave Coles, and he's going to present this one. There you go.
Well, we're doing, we've been, I was, have been fortunate this last year to serve on the Regional Solid Waste Management Board, and I've learned a lot about what happens to our trash once we put it out at the curb. And I've seen a lot of things going on in our region that has really been helpful and environmentally good for, for where we live. So this is a proclamation that the city would like to present on a day without a bag. Whereas more than three, let me see the decimal, 35.5 million plastic karat bags are used annually by the residents in the City of Vista, and whereas in the United States, less than 5% of plastic bags are recycled, and whereas plastic bags create litter problems for streets, beaches, and the marine environment throughout our region, and whereas as a member of the Regional Solid Waste Association, the City of Vista has added rethink and refuse to the motto reduce, reuse, and recycle. We all need to rethink our purchasing practices and refuse products that are made from toxic substances that fill up our trash containers and pollute our landfills. And whereas the City of Vista has set solid waste reduction and recycling goals, and has in place robust programs to encourage waste reduction and recycling at businesses, residences, construction sites, and multifamily residential locations, and whereas reusable shopping bags contribute to environmental sustainability, and whereas Vista joins cities throughout the region, along with the Solana Center for Environmental Innovation, to urge shoppers to forego single-use plastic and paper bags in favor of reusable tote bags to recognize a day without a bag. And whereas the City of Vista is committed to recognizing and honoring observances that are dedicated to the best ideals of public service, and a day without a bag is one such exemplary event, now therefore, the mayor and the members of the City of Vista Council do hereby proclaim Thursday, December 15th, 2011, as a day without a bag in the City of Vista. And, a postscript, a couple of announcements, tomorrow, the City of Vista is giving out bags, tonight, actually, at the front desk at City Hall from neck, oh, I'm sorry, not tonight, from next Monday through Thursday for use on a day without a bag on Thursday. The information is posted on the city's website and Facebook page. We gave out bags last, at the last.
They do have some right here, they're bringing.
Oh, we do have some we're giving out. Yeah, we do have some tonight. And from a store perspective, here's what's going on in Vista stores. At the 99 cents only store, a free bag with a $29.99 purchase. At Target, a free bag giveaway while supplies last, and the stores open at 8:00 a.m. This is next Thursday, December 15th. Albertson's, an incentive. Residents shopping with a reusable bag on Thursday, December 15th will be eligible to enter a drawing for a $25 gift card. And Vaughn's has an incentive. Residents shopping with a reusable bag on Thursday, December 15th will be eligible to enter a drawing for another $25 gift card. So we're doing our best to try to promote healthy environment. Thank you. And I'll give this to Risswa at my, at our next meeting.
We have one more, and I need, I have our city manager come down here for this one. Oh, yes. Come on, Rita. And I'm going to try to, I won't cry this, I'll try not to cry this time. This is very sad. I've been with, Rita's been my city manager for the last 13 years, so it's, it's great that she's retiring, but it's also sad. So I have a proclamation for Rita. It's not on the agenda, she said, but that's okay. It's on our agenda. So, I'm going to read this, because it's really important, and she's a very important person to us. Whereas Rita Geldert is retiring after 35 years in public service, with 17 years in the City of Vista. Rita was hired as Vista's Assistant City Manager on January 23rd, 1995. She was appointed interim city manager in July 1997, and appointed city manager in December 1997. Prior to coming to Vista, Rita served as a Director of Finance and Administration for the City of Dana Point, Management Services Officer for the City of Merced, Personnel Officers for the City of Vacaville, and while living on East Coast, also worked for IBM. Whereas creating a vibrant downtown is a primary goal of the city council, which as city manager Rita is responsible for implementing. In 2003, the opening of the Vista Village Project marked a key milestone in improving the downtown with shopping, dining, and entertainment opportunities in the Vista Village that have created a destination for local families and created hundreds of jobs for local residents. Whereas Rita has fostered the city's economic development program, which serves to recruit new businesses and retain existing ones in the city. Implementation of programs like the Vista Cares Business Retention Program demonstrates Rita's commitment to a strong, vibrant business community. And whereas Rita has worked to increase outreach and communication efforts to Vista residents with the creation of the Vista Citizens Academy, a seven-week program that provides residents with an in-depth understanding of city functions. The program has become a valuable tool for sharing with Vista residents on how the city operates, and has opened additional lines of communication between City Hall and those who live in our community. Whereas if asked of what community project she is most proud, Rita will say that her proudest accomplishment as Vista's city manager is the implementation of the Vista's Rock Neighborhood Revitalization Program, which in 11 years has used more than 7,500 volunteers to beautify nearly 250 properties and helped to instill a sense of pride among all Vistans. Whereas the family is the most important thing in Rita's life, a trait she has used to create a family environment among staff. Most former employees remark on how the warm and family-like atmosphere is what they miss most after leaving the city. Whereas Rita is a kind, generous, and caring person, and has a special way of making everyone feel comfortable and valued in the organization. With unanimous support of the mayor and city council, Rita led successful campaigns for Proposition L in 2006, which laid the groundwork for the community projects, and Proposition C in 2006, which brought charter city status and greater control over how the city does business. And whereas following the successful passage of Proposition L, Rita again showed her faith in her staff by creating a team of employees to manage the design and construction of community projects, all of which were completed on time and under budget, and will serve the community well into the future. Whereas with an eye to the future, Rita has established succession planning within the organization. This has resulted in numerous internal promotions over the years, including the appointment of the incoming city manager, Patrick Johnson. Preparing employees to take on new roles saves the city time and money when vacancies occur and allows for smooth transitions. Whereas as a part of her succession planning efforts, Rita established a bachelor's degree program, and later a master's degree program at a San Diego State University for city employees. Through her leadership, 17 employees earned bachelor's degrees and 11 employees earned master's degrees in public administration. The graduates now use the skills acquired in the classroom as they continue to serve the Vista community. Whereas Rita believes in the city, or the council manager form of government for cities, which she has fostered and supported by serving on the Board of Directors for the California City Management Foundation for 10 years, including four years as board president, and whereas the Vista City Council thanked Rita for her dedicated services to the city and wished her well in her retirement, she will be greatly missed by all who have had the great fortune to work with her. So now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim Saturday, December 31st, as Rita Geldert Day in the City of Vista. Congratulations, Rita. Okay, now, oh, a picture? Oh, okay.
Yeah, I've got my reason, but yeah, it's red and blue. It's like the flag today. Yeah. That's what I'm thinking about.
Now can we go?
Now we can go, now you can sit down.
Sure?
Yes. All this stuff here. A lot of stuff here. Okay, Captain Russell will now introduce Lieutenant Maron.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Scott Russell, Station Commander for the Vista Patrol Station. What I'd like to do tonight is introduce to you one of the newest members of our staff, Lieutenant John Maron. John started with the department in 1993. His first tour with us was at the George Bailey Detention Facility. From there, he, from 93 to 96, 96 he went to the Encinitas Patrol Station, did his patrol time there. From 96 to, or from 99 to 2002, he was one of the cops, deputies for the Encinitas Patrol Station. 2002 to 2005, John joined the street narcotics and gang detail as an investigator. Worked a lot of undercover business here in our own city of Vista, and in support of Encinitas as well. 2005, John promoted to the rank of Sergeant. And just recently, in 2011, John, actually in 2006, John went to our Internal Affairs Division, where he's worked for the last five years in Internal Affairs, which is a long stint. And recently promoted to the rank of Lieutenant, and he will be joining us at the station as our Patrol Lieutenant. So I'd like to.
Great, welcome.
Introduce him to all of you folks.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to say anything?
I'm excited to work for the city of Vista. I've done a lot of work up here through my time at patrol, cops, street narcotics and gangs. And my understanding is you're a great council to work for and very supportive of the department, and we appreciate that, so I'm excited.
Thank you, and welcome to Vista.
Great. Thank you very much.
The next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar, and I have, right now, items 11, 12, and 16 have been pulled by the public. Um, are there any items that one, do you pull? I don't have 15. Did you say 15? Okay, and 15. Any other ones? Anybody, any other council? Is there any other items we pulled? Okay, with, if, if no other items, then I would consider a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember, Mayor Porta Maguilera.
Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, I have to excuse myself on number 14. So I can't vote on that, so hold on.
But that's a consent. Just recuse yourself from that number.
Okay.
Okay, and then you can vote on the balance of the consent.
Thank you.
Okay. Please cast your votes. Okay, that motion passes. So those were all, those are several items that were taken in one, in one motion. And the next item we're gonna go to then is C11, which is the occupancy agreement with the San Diego Aces Disc Golf Association. I have one speaker. Do you want to hear the speaker first? It's Alejandro Sanchez. Is he here?
Would, would council like a report, or would you like to just have the speaker?
He's here.
Okay. Speaker first. Okay. Have a little report, please.
You wanna do a little, you wanna do a little short report? Yeah, that'd be good. Yes, you can wait for the report. Stay close.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Bill Fortmiller, Assistant Director, Recreation, Community Services. Um, I would like to add, there are representatives here from San Diego Aces, which can explain the sport of disc golf if, if you so desire. I've been out there to see them throw the discs, but I haven't really played the sport myself. San Diego Disc Golf Association is interested in constructing an 18-hole disc golf, or some people might know it as a frisbee golf course, at Ringo Terrace Park. Disc golf is played much like traditional golf, but rather than hitting a ball into a hole, a disc is thrown into a basket. And it's a basket sits up about this high with chains, and it's in different locations in, in the park. Uh, the goal of disc golf is the same as traditional golf, complete the course with the fewest number of throws. San Diego Aces Disc Golf Association, a nonprofit organization, was formalized in the 1970s and currently has a membership of 66,000. The association will construct, maintain, and provide improvements as necessary for the disc golf course at Ringo Terrace. In exchange for the services from the association, they would receive free use of the course for purpose of conducting tournaments. All tournaments will be scheduled in advance with the approval of the Recreation and Community Services Assistant Director. At other times, the course should be open to the public free of charge. The proposed course was chosen and designed around the passive use areas of the park and avoids popular picnic areas. On October 24th, the Parks and Recreation Commission, voting unanimously, recommend the city council enter an occupancy agreement with the San Diego Aces Disc Golf Association for construction and maintenance of the disc golf, disc golf course at Ringo Terrace Park. Answering any questions you might have, or if you wish to see something from.
Do you have questions, or you want to hear the speaker? Questions, anyone?
I'll listen to the speaker first.
Okay. Alejandro? Where did he go? Oh, here comes.
City council members, good evening. Uh, I guess that I have to get used to Mrs. Mayor. Tonight, I would like to talk about this item, uh, because it caught my attention a few weeks back on the NC Times. I heard that these people were gonna come and do business here in our city. I was expecting at least to, to pay some fee, but now I find out that everything is gonna be free for them. Not only free, but even they have to use some of our employees to pick up their trash and dump their trash as well. I just heard somebody to say some poles about this size. He almost goes like this size. You ever been the place where they're gonna locate these poles? You know how many poles they're gonna install? We have an overcrowding, uh, park. Many, probably of you guys never going there very often, but I do. And now having somebody else in utilizing, and trying to utilize for free, really bothers me a lot. I'm pretty sure that Mr. Coles is very happy, and some of you guys are very happy, maybe you got your share. But frankly, I think that this is the time where everybody has to pay. Everybody pays to use the facilities, our facilities, you know, for any kind of sport around our city. Why they don't, they, why they do have to be exempt a fee? It's a nonprofit, really? They have over 600 or something associates or members or whatever. I mean, it's huge to be a nonprofit. I don't believe it. I don't believe it's gonna be a nonprofit, or if it is a nonprofit, golf, is it really gonna benefit our city? I don't think so. I think it's gonna be, benefit some people that can afford it. But certainly our community, I don't think so. Certainly it's gonna affect me and my kids and some of the members of our community because the place is so way overcrowded. Now we're gonna have more people coming and, and really, we're gonna be affected by it. I just read some of the, uh, on the board packet outside. I read, uh, uh, the numbers in, in the contract, just a little bit. You know, it really makes me very, very nervous that we have a council that you don't pay attention when something is coming to our city, and just decide to let him go. Here we have a guy who says that this size, this size is the pole.
Could you wrap up, please?
So if he says this is the pole, and, and he didn't give you no numbers or anything, it really concerns me a lot.
Your time is up.
So I oppose, and I hope that you guys consider 20 times approve this thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez, followed by Mayor Porta Maguilera.
Thank you, Mayor Ritter. Is there gonna create any trash out there?
No, there's gonna be 18 greens or baskets, and then 18 tees. And, um, the way the tees are positioned, and there'll be trashcans near, near the, you know, near the tees. The golfers think are very respectful of, you know, of, of the course. The trash will be put in, in cans, hopefully, just like our, our normal uses of the park. The way the course is designed, it's in the passive areas of the park. They deliberately avoided the heavily used picnic areas.
So how about our landscaping? Will it affect our landscaping?
No.
No. Now, other cities have the same, are they in there for nothing too?
Kit, Kit Carson Park has, um, one, one installed, and Morley Field down in the city of San Diego. And I bel, I'd have to check with the Aces, but.
Was there a fee to have them on theirs?
No, again, it's, it's open to the public free. Um, the, once the course is installed, anyone that has discs or a frisbee can, can play golf. There's no fee to the public to use it.
So it's, it's a nonprofit. Now, uh, how much insurance are they carrying? Are they fully insured and all that? Or do we have to carry the insurance for that, or what's?
All the ins, the insurance is covered with, you know.
Their insurance?
Their, their insurance for, for the equip, they're responsible for the equipment. Any, any maintenance of the equipment.
Okay, so we have nothing to do with it, so it's not gonna cost us anything?
No.
Okay. Well, first of all, uh, I do, I've played baseball, I've played basketball, I walk, I've walked up there. So to say that, that none of us councils go up there, all of us go up there. We've all been there. So we're well aware of, of our park, and, uh, I don't have a problem with this. We'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Mayor Porta Maguilera, followed by Councilmember Coles.
Yeah, I think Mr. Sanchez brought up a couple of good points, but, uh, the one that I'm primarily focused on is the tournaments. Uh, the, the fields, or whatever you wanna call it, the track will be reserved for those players only at that time, right?
Right. If, if there's a tournament in play, it usually would be, in our discussions, it would be early morning, and we'd block off, some of the times, they'd have a, like a canopy for their tournament headquarters where people report in. But they'd usually be done, start like at 7:30 in the morning, be done by 11:00 or, or 12:00. And it would be, maybe, it wouldn't be every, you know, every weekend. They, they would be scheduled with us, and they'd work around any events that we have as well.
So it'd work a lot like any other organization that had to schedule.
Yes.
Playtime or tournament time. So is it true that these individuals, these tournaments would not be paying, unlike some of, like soccer and Pop Warner and?
Right. It's in exchange for the, for the equipment they're donating on the course and the maintenance of that equipment, that, that's the trade-off. They're providing a free recreational activity for the citizens of Vista and, and reciprocating by allowing them to run their tournaments there.
Okay, so, but they're still using our parks. I mean, I know you stated that there's no wear and tear on the, the, the park itself, but the grass, I mean, there's always wear and tear. I mean, shouldn't these people also be paying a fee for holding their tournaments? Pay their share?
Uh, at this, at this point, I mean, it's a, a trade-off for what, what they're providing in terms of a, a free service for the community. That's, that's, we're looking at that as the trade-off.
Okay. Okay, I don't, I don't know that I totally agree with that, so, thank you.
Councilmember Coles?
Yeah, I, I, I see this as, um, you know, really a donation of some play equipment for, to our city in an area that's, um, really well-designed for, for such a, a course. Uh, I've, I've seen these frisbee golf courses at other parks. There's one at the New Park in San Marcos. Uh, and that one was donated there as well, and people use that all the time. They bring their kids out and they play with it, um, uh, just as a free access to extend the opportunities in our, in our parks. Like we have playground equipment. It's, it's not unlike, uh, you know, having playground equipment that we, uh, use for our children and our families. The, the other thing, the tournament, I saw that as maybe a positive because we're always looking to bring, uh, consumers into our city. And I, I would hope this would have some benefit to occasionally bringing in, uh, people who would not only play games here as designated and approved by our, uh, by the city, but also spend some money. So I, I don't see a problem with this. I, I see it as a win-win for us.
If there's no more comments, then I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Do I have a second? I have a second by Councilmember Lopez. Please cast your votes. The motion passes with Councilmember Aguilera voting nay. Okay, the next item will be a lease agreement by, um, the operation of the curbside at 307, I think my glasses on Main Street. Do I have, um, do you want to report on that, or do you want to hear the speaker? It was pulled by the public. Both? You want to hear a little report? Okay, you have a short report on that.
Okay. Um, the city owns the property located at 307 Main Street. Since 2002, John Randall has leased this property for the purpose of operating the Curbside Cafe. During the term of this lease, Mr. Randall has properly maintained the facilities and made several improvements to the building at his cost. Mr. Randall is currently seeking approval to conduct additional improvements such as the installation of new kitchen wall panels, painting interior walls, and installation of new counters. The previous lease contained an escalator clause that resulted in the monthly rental rate to exceed the prevailing market rate. A rate similar to other rental rates for, for space comparable in size and location. The proposed lease would be effective October 1st, 2011, for a term of six years, with an option to renegotiate at the end of the term. The proposed lease rate is for $1.62 per square feet, worth $3,738 per month, and is the, the rate that Mr. Randall was paying this previous year.
Do you have any questions, or would you like to hear the speaker?
I have no questions.
Okay. Chuck Rabel?
Madam Mayor, City Council, Chuck Rabel here. I, I frequent, uh, curbside often. And, uh, this lease is a good thing. I'm not against it. My Rotary Club, Shadow Ridge Rotary, uh, put together a work list, uh, things to do before the parade. And, uh, the parking lot at curbside was on our list, but we didn't get to it. It needs to be maintained. Yes, there's a contractor that has the, the responsibility, but you can't subcontract ownership. And, uh, John is not responsible for the parking lot. He's just responsible for the building. And, um, if you would, put it on your work list, or stop by and look. And you'll, you'll see that, uh, it, it needs trimming, it needs weeding, and a whole bunch of other stuff. See to it what you, do what you can do, uh, if you would. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Is there any discussion? If not, I'd, um, look for a motion.
I'll move on to this item.
I'll second.
Please, I had a motion second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on, we were going to move to item number, um, 16, C16, which is a street rehabilitation res servicing project award of contract.
Did somebody pull 15?
15. It was, I'm sorry. Oh, it's 15? Oh, I'm sorry, Steve. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Steve, okay.
I also want to thank Sam Felicia for the dedication that he's had for that park area. And I believe that that whole kitchen was designed by him up there years ago. And has, over the years, improved that kitchen so it could be easier service for the folks of our community. But I think that he has gotten to the point where, you know, where maybe it's not as profitable as before. And so I have a feeling that was the reason. And I wish the new guy that's coming in that is successful in it, because it's, being in the food business, it's a tough business to be in. And maybe if possible, that some of you folks that are here will stop in and thank Sam Felicia for all the years that he put in there. Because he's been a family that has donated so much to this community over the years. And I was kind of disappointed when he announced that he was not coming back. And thank you, Sam. Sam, family, you're hearing this, and good luck. Thank you.
Did you want to second the motion?
Yes.
Okay. We all are going to miss Sam, actually, that his service, he did a great job there. We all will miss him. So please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, now, we'll do a C-16, sorry. C-16 was a street rehabilitation and resurfacing project award of the contract.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before Mr. Conley prepares a report, is the primary reason this was pulled from the agenda at the beginning by staff is to be able to present an alternate recommendation. And given a number of discussion on the bids, is that there's an alternate staff recommendation is to reject all bids and to rebid the project. And so at this point in time, would council like to have a report from council, from staff? Yes?
If it's, did you call on me?
Councilmember Coles?
If it's the staff recommendations that we just rebid, I don't think we need to hear anymore at this time unless other people want to hear it. I'm willing to go along with rebidding it based on some of the concerns that have come up.
And there are a couple of speakers also. So would you like a report from Mr. Conley? Or would you?
You want to hear the speaker?
Hear the speakers first.
I would second, I'll second your motion.
Why don't we hear the report?
You do, you want to hear the report?
My light's on down here.
What? Okay, Councilmember Lopez, did you have something to say?
Yes, I'd like to listen to the report and also like to listen to the speakers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. John Conley, interim Director of Engineering and Community Development Director. This is a project to resurface several arterial and collector streets within the city. It was bid back in October. We received eight bids on the project. And the process typically requires that the city award the project to the lowest bidder. In this case, the lowest bidder was a company in Escondido by the name of George Weir Asphalt. But unfortunately, there was an error with his bid. And I'll explain that briefly. As part of the bid process, the city issues a book that provides the information that's necessary for the bidders to provide a bid. It provides all the details and requirements. Those books are printed by a company local to this area and provided by staff to the bidders. In this case, Mr. Weir was provided two books. One book did not have all of the pages in it. So the bid book that was provided by the city was incomplete. Upon reviewing the bids, the staff determined that Mr. Weir's bid that was submitted was the book that was missing the pages. And so therefore, we've determined, based on further legal review, that it's a non-responsive bid. I can go into detail if you have more questions about that. Based on this, the next lowest bidder is All American Asphalt, which is an Anaheim company which provided the next lowest bid. The staff recommendation that's provided in the report is to award the contract to All American Asphalt and reject Mr. Weir's bid as non-responsive. As a result of the issue that's been raised, and I know Mr. Weir's here this evening and has concerns about it, the staff understands the council's concerns with the process. It is clouded from what's happened. And we do agree that going back out to bid is certainly a viable option that we can exercise at this time. That concludes my staff presentation. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez, do you want to, was the speakers?
Just ask him a question. No, I want to ask John. John, Mr. Conley, excuse me. Has there been other bids sent to the city over the years that have been clouded, like you said, that you've, yet that you've had to bring to council to determine?
Yes. This exact instance, I can't remember that that's happened. But there have been problems with bids in the past where we've rejected them. That absolutely happens all the time.
At a staff level or a council level?
The staff determines the errors and presents them to the council. But it's ultimately the council's decision to reject that bid.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay, so, Steve, are you, you have time?
Yeah.
Councilmember, Ronkey, I turned it on there, but okay.
I'd like to go along with staff recommendation on this. The only, the only reason I believe in that is because it seems to be a simple error in oversight. And I don't think that we should punish anyone in the process. I think the only people that are going to be punished, if we bid this again, it's going to take, if I understand, about four months.
Our estimate is three to six months to get it back and awarded and out to construction.
Yeah. The only people that are going to be punished are the people that drive down that street. Because I have heard it from a number of people about the condition of that street. So I will go along with the rebid, but reluctantly, just because the constituents are going to be hampered in their, you know, going down that road.
So I have three speakers. Do you still want to hear the speakers?
Yes. If they want to speak.
Oh, we do have to, oh. Just thought I had an option here. Okay, George Weir, first speaker. Yeah, you're in trouble once you push that button. Just don't push it anymore. Okay, just, it'll stop now.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is George Weir. Born and raised in Escondido and graduated from San Diego State. We are a local family established in 1979. We have just completed our second consecutive annual street rehabilitation program for the city of Escondido. So we are very familiar with the scope of such a large project. We understand the need to work together, to partner with the city of Vista to make this a successful project for the citizens of Vista. Which brings us to tonight. We sent a courier to the city to pick up two complete bid packages. One was for our Estimane Department and one for Contracts Administration. Two departments, two separate buildings. One copy would sit on the shelf pristine and untouched until the day of the bid. The other copy, estimating, goes out into the field with meetings with subcontractors, vendors, suppliers, foreman, and superintendent. That package truly gets pretty beat up. We were the parent low bidder at the bid opening on November 17th. The first inkling of a problem was 11 days later when we looked at the E-Bid Board posting. Our head estimator, Rick Krantz, called to find out what the issue was. He was told by Tim Shell that our bid was deemed non-responsive because we had torn pages out of the bid book. That was later changed to us having cut the pages from the bid book. Our response was that, that was ridiculous. Why would we do that? Rick immediately went down to the city and inspected our bid book firsthand. Tim Shell, after long delay, came back somewhat chagrined and said, you're right. Our bad. You didn't cut, tear, or remove the pages. They're missing from the bid book we sold you. We thought, at that point, okay. That's the end of it. The city's problem, not ours. Later that afternoon, I called Tim Shell to make sure all was fine. He told me no, that while he and Assistant Attorney Pete Grover agreed that we had sold you a defective bid package, one that didn't include pages two through 21, your bid is deemed non-responsive. Somehow, it was now our fault. I paid full price for a complete bid package. We spent weeks and thousands of dollars putting this bid package together. Every page of the book we received was filled out correctly and completely. Tim said that he'd never heard or seen of this happening before in the 11 years he's been with the city. Somehow, the city's printer had made a mistake. After identifying that 19 of the missing 21 pages were what we call boilerplate information, and after realizing that only two pages required filling out supporting documents, I offered to come by and fill out the missing pages. All would be fine. We had no intentions of pulling our bid. We are excited to move forward with the city, and that's where we stand tonight. I've had several conversations with the number-two bidder, All American Asphalt, since the bid opening. Robert Bradley, the Senior Vice President, had told me that if Weir was awarded the contract, they would not protest the bid by city council. Our bonding company has confirmed we've been bound to our bid all along. I provided that attachment for you. In a nutshell, the city created the situation. I didn't. I had every reasonable expectation to believe that I had received a complete, non-defective bid package. Tonight, you can correct the city's mistake and save yourselves $53,000. There's no assurance that a rebid will yield these same numbers.
Could you wrap up, Mr. Weir?
Material prices, especially oil, are volatile. The council can waive this irregularity. We'd love to partner with you and get busy fixing your city streets. Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brett Schatzenbach. Watch out for that button.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Brett Schatzenbach. I'm the CEO at the Vista Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here to discuss the situation that has come up with Weir Construction. And I think that when you look at the situation where they have acted in good faith with the materials they were given and put a bid together that was complete to the best of their ability with the materials they were given, we shouldn't put this back out to rebid. I disagree that the only person that would be, that would be hurt by that is the citizens who drive that street. Because the bid process, which is supposed to be done in secrecy, everybody's supposed to do their own bid and submit it, and then the city's supposed to evaluate those independently. Now it's out here. Everybody's bids are public now. And so they would be completely compromised in their competition with the other bidders by going back and just putting this out to rebid. They've supplied, I think you've seen the report from their attorneys, I know you've had counsel from your attorney, but you know, there's some case law out there that shows you can accept their bid. They were acting in good faith. There's nothing material missing from these pages that weren't there. They represent a local company. They employ Vistons. They're $53,000 than the nearest bidder. There's an aspect of, let's do the right thing here. These guys did act in good faith. They put together a great bid to do a good job for our community. They will be hurt. They will be hurt if this goes out to rebid because their prices are now public. And their approach is now public and everything. So I disagree with that approach. I do applaud the staff for being forthright and honest that it was their error and not George Weir's error. So I applaud that on the staff side. But I disagree with the idea of putting this back to bid. Award it to them tonight, and let's move forward and get these streets done. Thank you.
Chuck Rabel?
Hello again. I'm amazed that staff admits that they, they're not infallible in some cases. Because that was the party line forever. There's no reason to rebid this. As Brett just said, it wouldn't be fair. And this was a great opportunity to do things local. And there's no reason why we can't. Secondly, now that we're a charter city, we don't have to go with the lowest bidder, do we? Yes, we do? And why is that, if I can ask?
Because our code requires that we go with the lowest bidder.
We can't change the code?
But we haven't.
Oh. The charter doesn't override the code? Okay.
The charter is silent. It refers to the code, and the code sets the rules, which apply to everybody.
Well, that's why you get paid. This is a great opportunity to think about corrective action. And I would propose that you take a hard look at centralizing the purchasing contract function in one shop in the city. Right now, the department heads have all to say. I've heard from a number of former suppliers that somehow they got in an argument with the department head and they lost the next bid, or they got fired, or whatever. There needs to be a safety valve for situations like that outside the department. Give it some thought, please. And there are probably some functions that could be combined in that shop. And you might even save money, okay, with a professional contract management type. And you definitely save money by consolidating some of the purchasing function. Thank you.
Councilmember, or Member Tamagulera is on here. Yeah. And then Councilmember Lopez, after that.
This question's for our city attorney. There was, I can't find it now, but it was something that was handed out just before the meeting started. And it's a letter from his bond company. I know we've discussed this, I just want to clarify. Does that change anything as far as the, I mean, can he now be held accountable with this letter that's been provided?
The question isn't whether he can be held accountable now. The question in the bidding process is whether he could have been held accountable had he walked away from his bid in the beginning. The basic rule in contracting in the state of California is that some irregularities in bids can be waived, others cannot. The ones that cannot be waived are ones that give a bidder an unfair advantage over other bidders. And that usually is construed to mean, or most commonly means, that there is some error in their bid which would allow them to take a look at the bids after they're open, decide, oh, don't like the result. I was the low bidder. I came in too low. And then withdraw their bid and walk away without losing their bid bond. The bonding company in its letter clearly says that they are bound now. But in my view, had the issue arisen, which it did not, but which it could have arisen right after the bid opening, I don't believe the bonding company would have stood by the bid. And that, for me, is the test on whether or not the irregularity can or cannot be waived. That's why the position taken in our letter is that the irregularity should not be waived. Obviously, the council ultimately retains the discretion to make its own decision. But my advice in the matter is that, in fairness to all of the participants in the bidding process, which is after all what we are required to do, we're required to be fair, not just to one bidder, but to all bidders, is that in this case, all bids be rejected and the project be rebid.
Anything else?
Not right now, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Lopez, followed by Councilmember Coles.
Thank you, Mayor Ritter. Mr. Conley, has the second bidder, has he sent any kind of protest on this at this time?
Not to my knowledge.
Not to your knowledge, okay. The mistake that we, that, the city did not make the mistake. The company that sent the papers made the mistake, the way I look at it. But the city is responsible for that, is the way I look at it. Now, like the gentleman from the chamber said, he, the bids are out. So now you go out to bid again, it's kind of unfair, the way I look at it. I would like to ask Mr. Weir to come up to the podium. I want to ask him a couple of questions. Do you, could you, right off the top of your head, tell me, give me three companies, big companies, that you have done work for? Locally?
Well, we've worked at Tri-City Hospital.
Okay.
We've worked at a couple of your car dealerships. We've worked Norman Kathy Frazier, dear friends of ours, at Frazier Farms. We've worked at all your schools. We're a regular bidder and contractor for Vista Irrigation District. We've worked just about every business. Many of our, I think 15 of our employees live here in Vista and attend the surrounding areas. So we're here in Vista all the time.
So you have how many employees of yours live in the city of Vista?
We have 15 employees that live in Vista.
Okay. 15 live, okay. And you probably don't know, but they own homes and?
Some own homes, some rent, yes, sir.
Okay. A couple of years back, a few years back, when we built this building here, we had four contractors. And one of them was Lizardi Construction. contractors, and one of them was Lassardi Construction. And at that time, Lassardi Construction lost the bid for this building. The company that had the building, that got the bid, was from San Diego. They had a total, that company had a total of this many employees that lived in the city of Vista. Lassardi Construction had 64 employees that lived in the city of Vista. I'm not a mathematician, but I can tell you that 64 people living in this city, having jobs, and we receiving money every week or every two weeks, is a lot of money for this community. Sure, the bids were the same, but they just picked the other company. Here we have, you're saving the city $50-some thousand, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes. And I want to know, can you do the job?
Yes, sir.
You can. How about your facilities? Do you have the facility to do this job? I mean, do you have the...
Yes, sir. We've had the last two projects in Escondido, very similar in nature in dollar value. We have the only asphalt plant this side of Miramar Road. We have our own recycle yards in the area. We have five recycle yards. All the material coming out of your streets, all the asphalt, all the concrete would be taken to our recycle yards. We recycle 100% of the product, nothing goes into the landfill.
My grandson plays across the street from your plant, ice hockey, and I noticed that you've had some changes there. Did you rebuild your plant?
Yes, sir. A year ago, we made application to City Escondido to expand our asphalt plant. We received a wonderful 5-0 vote from the council to expand our asphalt plant, so we've now increased our productive capacity by 400%.
I think it's, I think we'd be opening up a can of worms by going out to bid again, and $50-some thousand is quite a bit. As long as the numbers, if your number is less than the others, you can do the job, then I'm supporting that. So, to re-go out and rebid it and do it again four months from now, as winter's coming, it's difficult for our roads, and we're wasting our time, and I just believe that this is the right thing to do, is to go with this man here. He has 10 employees that live in the city of Vista, and it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Coles, followed by Councilmember Gronky.
Thank you. First of all, I do want to congratulate the staff and thank them for being forthright in owning up to a mistake that was not created or intentionally engendered by them, but really by a print shop that we contracted with. And this whole thing could have really been spun differently if they tried to CYA and denied that that happened. But they owned up to it, they were very forthright in that. So, thank you to your staff, Mr. Connolly. But really, more to the point, is, are there, are there any legal ramifications for awarding a bid to somebody who has technically, or at least on the report, been disqualified? I mean, do we have the authority to requalify somebody who has gone through a process for, to have done it incorrectly, you know, no finger pointing against them, because they were doing it all in good faith? And is there any liability for us as a city in terms of the bonding process and any shortfalls that may occur in the future, should we run into any difficulties?
The question is, for me, is whether or not this irregularity in the bid can be waived. My best legal advice is that it should not be waived. The council has the power to not follow that advice, obviously, and to award the bid. The legal risk in doing that is that another bidder, such as All American Asphalt, might choose to challenge the award of the bid. Whether or not that's likely to happen, from my perspective, is not the issue. My perspective on this, and the way I've handled it in dealing with the issue, is that the city ought to work with the utmost transparency and within the framework of the rules that govern this kind of bidding, and conduct itself accordingly. And that is the basis for my recommendation, that you reject all bids. No contractor who has bid on a project, certainly no contractor who's the low bidder on a project, appreciates having bids rejected and rebid. There's no certainty that you will get a lower price, the same price, or a higher price. No one knows precisely where that process will turn out. And it is true that, obviously, elements of the bid are exposed at that point, but this is certainly not uncommon. It is actually, in the course of any given year in the cities that I've worked for, it happens a number of times. And nobody likes to do it, but it's the way you create a clean slate and start over again with a clean and open process.
Well, as a follow-up to that, in the letter that Mr. Weir presented to us and shared with us, he said that he's had conversations with All American Asphalt and was told that they would not protest, or they would not, you know, file an unfair action. I mean, that's, we don't, I don't have that in writing from their legal counsel or from their corporate office. And unless I had that, I would feel very uncomfortable in moving forward, simply because we could expose ourselves to a much greater liability and a further delay. I mean, we're talking about a potential three-to-six month delay. If we got tied up in court over a protested bid, we could be a year away. So, I guess that's what I would be seeking, is that level of assurance, not just a verbal presentation or a verbal promise.
And your information here is certainly all that I have, but again, I will say that whether or not that is the case, it wouldn't change my recommendation, simply because you can do something and not be sued if you're not doing the right thing.
Oh, okay. Well, that helps.
So, Mayor Portia Aguilera.
Yeah. Earlier, we had a conversation about what they can actually sue for, and I believe you stated that all, well, whether it was All American or Weir, anybody, could not sue for attorney's fees and administrative costs?
The rule in California is that upon rejection of all bids, that does not create any legal liability for the city.
What if we decided to disregard your advice and award it to Weir and Company, and All American decided to not follow through? Could they sue for their attorney's fees? Or what could they sue for?
If All American were to take legal action, they would seek an injunction to prohibit the award of the contract, to void the award, and to seek the award of the contract to themselves. They would not receive attorney's fees in the process, but obviously, there would be an extensive delay, and there would be expense to the city in the context of our own legal fees, dealing with the action. But no, there's no attorney's fees involved, but what they would seek to do would be to stop any progress on the project until the legal matter is resolved.
Okay.
Councilmember Gronky.
Well, first of all, I want to apologize to the speakers for giving the decision before I heard from you. Sorry for that, but it doesn't change my mind in the direction I'm going to go with this. I think there is potential for liability, and if that liability, if that legal action does take place, then this project is even further put behind. And four months is enough, and I'd hate to see it go longer. As for giving the bid out tonight, we acknowledge as a city that we did make a mistake, Mr. Weir, and I'm willing to apologize for that, along with the city. And I think your bid is a good bid. I think your next bid will come in, and you'll receive the contract. I'm just confident of that.
Councilmember Lopez.
Just one more quick question. Could I have you come up again, Mr. Weir? Did you had conversations with the second bidder about protesting?
Yes, yes, sir. We have had several conversations. The two companies, our company and All American Asphalt, the number two bidder, are both privately held companies. We've had a longstanding friendship between owners. The owner, Dan Sizmore, sadly has just passed away about three weeks ago. We work together on projects. They'll work for us, we'll work for them on projects. The senior vice president, only second to the owner, passed away. Brad Bradley, or Robert Bradley, has talked to me a number of times, and to quote him, he said, "There's 110% chance we would never bid this, protest this job." And by way of that, if you look, are now public, of all our sub prices, and as Brett mentioned, is now open for public to see, we've actually listed All American in two different categories. They are subcontracted to us in two parts of this bid, so they would have to be essentially falling on their own sword to protest this bid.
Where do they get their product from? Do they haul it from where?
They're from Corona. That's their closest plant. So their equipment, their employees, all the asphalt goes to Corona.
And the next bid should be less than yours, and they're still going to bring all that equipment and still come out here for less money, less than what you're bidding it for. Is that what's happening here?
Well, no, they're higher. They're actually higher than our bid. If you throw in the five added alternates, they're going to be $53,000 higher than our bid would be. Would it cost the city $53,000 to take the number two bidder?
I, okay, thank you. I just believe that we should not go out to bid on this. This is a local company. They're, if a contractor talks to another contractor, man to man, you're here talking to me, and you're saying that you've talked to them, there will not be a protest, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. I will further indemnify the city for that.
Well, I don't see why we shouldn't go forward with this company. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Yeah, I'm going to have to agree with Mr. Lopez on this.
Thank you, John.
The... You're welcome. The, I struggle with this, because I think that our society is just so, becomes so fearful of ending up in court, and we're always trying to decide who's going to sue us, who's not going to sue us, or what lawsuit we can win, or what lawsuit we can't win. And I get tired of, in my business, I have to listen to attorneys as well, and I do respect attorneys and their advice. I think they're very, they are necessary. But I think our society has just come to, every time we've got to contact our attorney and see whether we're going to get sued or not. And that's not really how business gets done efficiently. I understand that attorneys are a necessary, sorry for the, necessary evil, but...
Careful.
You know, I think in this case, we've got a local businessperson who employs local people. The money would be flowing to North County in a lot of different ways, through our local economy. Some of that, hopefully, would come through Vista as well. I would support keeping the money here in North County and keeping the jobs here in North County. And I know for right now, it's just myself and Mr. Lopez, but I'm going to throw it out there, I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead with Mr. Weir.
We already have a motion.
I second that.
Is that, we already have a motion on the floor, is that a substitute motion?
Yes. I didn't know we had a motion on the floor.
You had a motion and a second.
I second that, John.
No, you can't second, whoa.
Oh.
Well, then I think the other motion died, right?
Yeah. There was no second.
It didn't die.
All right. What was it? There was no second.
It had a first and a second, so you're offering a substitute motion, and you would vote on the substitute motion first, correct?
Correct.
Okay, it's a substitute motion then.
Okay.
And I second it.
Second on the substitute.
Councilmember Gronky wants to say something first.
I just need some legal clarification. There's eight bidders on this chart here, and we've been talking just about the second bidder when we talk about possible litigation. Could any of the other bring litigation against us?
Yes, yes, any other bidder could. It's not likely, but they certainly could legally.
If it's not likely, is it possible that, since Mr. Weir's had conversations with the owners of All American, is it possible if All American was to sign off on a legal document clarifying that they would allow Mr. Weir? Would that somehow clear up this dilemma?
Well, it might clear up the dilemma in the sense that it would make the council more comfortable, but as I indicated earlier, it wouldn't change my advice. But obviously, it might influence the comfort level of individual council members.
As it would I. It sounds to me that we have a split council here, and it sounds to me that Mr. Weir is prepared to have conversations with this gentleman and possibly get some kind of document from them, stating such?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. And it appears to me that we're talking about a company that has a number of people that live and work in our community, and you've come well under the engineer's bid and estimate for this project. So I will vote.
The problem I have is, I support Mr. Weir, and I truly hope you get the bid. I have to go the other way, but I hope you get the bid, because I'd like to give to local companies, and I hope you do that. But it looks like you're negotiating a bid. These were bids. It looks like you're trying to negotiate that, and I'm not sure we should do that as a council, is to negotiate it out in the open, when it was supposed to have been a bid process. So, I'm going to listen to the attorney. I worry, I don't want to put us open to a lawsuit, so I have to... I have to support what the attorney's advice is, because I just, it just seems to me that we shouldn't be really talking about all of this out like this, so, because it's a bid process. So, I guess do we want to vote on the...
Well, I have a...
Oh, okay, okay. Councilmember Coles, sorry.
Yeah, I have to agree with you, Mayor Ritter. I do. I admire the fact that you're somewhat local, you have employees who live and will work here, but as with any governmental agency, it gets, things get lost in the process. And if we, if we somehow deviate from the process in a knee-jerk reaction, which is what I see happening here, we've got staff recommendations, we've got our legal counsel who sits with us recommending, would be defending us in the event that things went wrong. And things do go wrong. You know that. You've probably had things go wrong in bidding and carrying out bids in the past. And I think for your protection and ours, I don't, I don't, I see you getting this bid, but I want it to be done clean and correctly, and not with a spur-of-the-moment... I haven't had a chance to research all these potential litigation things that could be coming. I don't know that. I'm unprepared to switch direction here at the dais on a recommendation that came to us, and without having all this background. So I just have to say, timeout, let's do this again. It's not uncommon. I was in, you know, I built a lot of schools... I was in, you know, I built a lot of schools, and we had a lot of anomalies in bid process. And we had to go out a number of times on bids because of anomalies. It's not like this is the end of the world, and I think that being local, being responsive, you're going to cut, undercut any competitor because you're nearby. You can process the material nearby. And so I just, I think I have to stick with advice of our council and our staff.
So Councilmember Gronky, did you have something else to say? And then Councilmember Lopez again.
Well, I, I did recommend, recommendation on getting the paperwork from this individual, and I would like to make that as an amendment to the original proposal.
I would agree to that.
Councilmember Lopez.
Today, our whole world is having difficulties with the economy. But a lot of our businesses today leave this country and go to other countries. And we're having a heck of a time here now. Maybe it's our own fault that they're gone, but when you elect leaders to take care of our country, they need to look at what's happening in this country. But here in Vista, it's in a smaller way. Today, we have a bid here that is saving our money and is going to a local business here in our area. Residents of our community that will feel proud that their company and they're doing work in our community. So I hope this council thinks about this because it's important that it's time for us to give the business to our local people, to our local companies from this country. So thank you, and that's, I'm done. Thank you.
Good. Actually, I agree with you, but I, but we do live in this country, and lawsuits are out there. So you have to listen to the legal, your legal attorney. So we're going to vote on Mayor Protem's, and I, could somebody repeat what exactly?
It's a substitute motion.
Substitute motion is?
That the contract be awarded to Weir Construction Company. And that was, the motion was made by Mayor Protem Aguilera, with the second by Councilman Lopez, with the amendment by Councilman Gronky to add in a letter, that the condition, the bid be conditioned by a letter from All Americans stating that they concede the bid to George Weir Construction Company.
Correct.
Okay. So we're going to vote on that motion.
Please cash your votes. Okay, that motion passes.
Congratulations.
Mayor, just one moment for conferring. The resolution has been prepared to award the bid to George Weir Construction. That was a motion to do so. So now we have a resolution that we would like to have read into the record, at least the title, to adopt the resolution.
Yes. It's a resolution of the City Council, the Charter City of Vista, California, awarding a construction agreement with George Weir Asphalt Construction, Inc., for construction of the street rehabilitation and maintenance project. The, I will pass over the findings and go to the action. The construction agreement between the City of Vista and George Weir Asphalt Construction, Inc., for the street rehabilitation and resurfacing project in the amount of $3,676,646.40 is approved, subject to receipt of a legally binding document from the second low bidder agreeing not to contest the bid, and B, the mayor is authorized to execute the construction agreement.
Do you ask to vote on that?
It, could we have a vote on that, just so that the record is very clear that the, that this resolution is the one that the council is adopting?
Okay. So do we vote, like we did before, I guess? Like that? But I have to sign it when I say vote a no.
I, could I, could I ask for clarification? Did that replace the previous vote?
No, it was an amendment, it was in addition to it. It was just clarifying that the vote was to award the bid. So now we've read the resolution, which you didn't have in your packets before, but we prepared today to say that, we prepared two resolutions. One to say if it was rewarded to George Weir Construction Company, and the other was, is if it was a rebid, to send it out to rebid. So this was a resolution now was read into the packet that wasn't in the, in the packet that you received in the agenda report. It solidifies your action taken in the other vote.
Well, I, I felt conflicted, I guess, because the first vote, I felt that I could not vote to go against our representation, you know, what we were being steamrolled into doing.
Majority vote.
The majority vote. The, the, the second vote, I felt was a vote on the accuracy of what the first vote meant, not to have a second bite at the apple. So I, I now support the fact that our attorney is at least coming up with the verbiage to clarify what we voted on originally. That's why I voted yes on that one. Not because I felt, I still feel steamrolled, but at least our attorney has given me some confidence that we're being accurately steamrolled.
I have confidence in it too, so.
With a pun intended.
Before we go on, I just wanted to say, before you guys leave, before everyone leaves, I just, you might want to take an ornament, just the vellum part off the Christmas tree, and bring back the corresponding gift for the Marine Helicopter Group that we've adopted, our city's adopted HMLA 369. This is the city's adopted unit, and it's currently deployed, and their family members are going to be with, without their loved ones this holiday. So if you're able to help any of these courageous men and women, that would be really nice. A thank you from the bottom of our hearts, and if you could pick up an ornament and bring it back, that would be great. So we appreciate that. Next item on our agenda is the one you've all been waiting for, Skateboard Committee Report on the Potential Skateboard Locations. Oh, you know what? We have D1 first. You gotta wait one more, one more quick moment here. I was trying to hurry you along. Okay, so we need to have the selection of a Mayor Protem, which is our discussion item D1. And so, Councilmember Aguilera.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Councilman Gronky for Mayor Protem for the year 2012.
And I'd like to second that, please.
Okay. Councilmember Lopez?
Yes. I turned my light on before Mr. Aguilera did. I turned it on, and you did not accept my light.
Because I was looking that way.
Okay, well, you need to look at the light when you pick, because that's what you go by. But it's okay because I was going to be in support of Mr. Gronky, so it's all right.
Please vote.
Hmm?
Yeah, yeah, you do.
She can vote. You better vote yourself. If you vote no, we're in trouble. Yeah, I think, are we all voted?
Yeah.
Says votes pending, too.
Mine's blinking, yes.
We're going to start it again. Oh, there it goes. Okay, motion passes. And now, we're going to do, you don't have to clap again, okay?
Good luck.
Okay. Okay. Skateboard Park Committee Report on the Potential Skate Park Locations, and we're going to have a report on that first, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. John Conley presenting before you again. With me tonight, I have Bill Fortmuler, the Assistant Director of Parks and Community Services, Recreation Community Services. Mr. Fortmuler and I both served on a committee that was formed as a result of a request by the Vista Skate Park Coalition. The Skate Park Coalition is a community-based organization formed in the interest of developing a skate park in Vista, and has been having a lot of conversations with staff over the past year in an attempt to try to pursue some funding opportunities and a location for a skate park. The committee was formed to evaluate possible locations based on their request, and so the committee consists of eight members, which represented the Skate Park Coalition, the Parks and Recreation Commission, which is a commission to the council, the Sheriff's Department and city staff, which were Mr. Fortmuler and myself. We held three meetings during the fall of this year to discuss a number of different criteria and locations, and through that process, we reviewed about 24 different sites, that many of which were provided by the coalition upfront. The map on the screen is a little difficult to see, but shows the 24 locations that we initially considered. This is included in Exhibit Four in your packet. The initial request by the coalition was to review all properties that looked as feasible locations, including both public and private sites. But after a number of discussions and consideration, the committee determined that city-owned property would be the best consideration in terms of a major criteria in determining what site would be the best site, primarily based on the fact that the city owns the property and wouldn't have to complicate a future project by the purchasing of private property or any agreement with another public agency. And something to note, as part of this process, there were a number of redevelopment properties that were also offered up by the coalition. These are properties that are owned by the redevelopment agency, different from the city, and a number of those properties were rejected right out of the gate as a result of the redevelopment agency's plans for those properties in the future. So I can cover that in more detail if there are questions. Major criteria that we considered, as I mentioned, city-owned property was the top one, so we focused the majority of our efforts on sites that are owned by the city at this current time. The previous skate park that sat on this site was about 8,000 square feet, and so the coalition and the committee's determination was that about an 8,000 to 10,000 square-foot area would be appropriate for a future skate park. To include parking and other facilities, we assumed that about a half-acre site would be necessary to truly facilitate a standalone skateboard facility. The half-acre applies to a standalone site, so it isn't to be construed as a park site that has other facilities, because the parking, we assume, would be included in that. The three major criteria that we evaluated the sites on is visibility, visibility from the street for security purposes and from the, from the public viewpoint, access to public transportation, accessibility to the site, and separation from residential uses to the extent that it was practicable. Other major considerations were sidewalks to the properties, you know, whether it was contiguous sidewalks or good access to the site on paved sidewalks or streets, and a central location where it was near Sprinter stations and the downtown core area. Based on those, based on those criteria, we've identified three locations that we're recommending this evening. The first is Wildwood Park, and I'm sorry, these are order, in order of preference as far as the committee's recommendations go. Wildwood Park was selected as the top priority in terms of a location that meets the criteria for the subcommittee. The area that's shown in the triangle that's clouded in orange is the general area where we'd recommend placing the skateboard location at the north end of the park. It's furthest away from the businesses and nearest residential homes, and provides what we feel is an adequate location for a facility that would be visible from the street. This would require the possible relocation of a number of picnic tables that are located around a tree in that portion of the park, and would possibly require moving the play area or the bathrooms as part of a future project. But the subcommittee felt that it could facilitate a skateboard park within Wildwood and still accommodate the users of that park that use it today. One thing to note is that the county deeded this property to the city many, many years ago for the purposes of using it as a park. We did review that grant deed internally and made a determination that a skate park would fit within the recreational or park uses that were mandated in that deed. There is some difference of opinion from some members of the community on that, and I'm sure you'll hear from them this evening. The second location that we recommended was Bringle Terrace Park, and there are two locations at Bringle Terrace Park that were recommended by the subcommittee. The first is the Horseshoe Pit, which is shown in the clouded area with an A on it. This is adjacent to Ville Terrace Drive and would be the most visible site from the street. It includes the horseshoe area, which is not heavily used right now, and there is a fairly passive area around it that doesn't see a lot of use. This area was recommended for use as a dog park at one time, but that property, that project was delayed as a result of funding, and so consideration for this site would require that if there is a dog park in the future, it be relocated to another site. The second property or part of the park is Area B that's shown adjacent to the parking area for the basketball courts. That would be up near the parking area for the gymnasium, and it would be south of the Moonlight Amphitheater, as shown in the photo. There were some concerns about potential impacts with the moonlight, but the committee's general recommendation assumed that the majority of time that this site would be used, the moonlight would not be in use, and in the evening periods when the moonlight wasn't used, that we could either facilitate closure of it or at least some security measures to eliminate problems. The third location is the future Mana Vista Detention Basin. This is an area off Mana Vista Drive, just east of South Santa Fe. You can see South Santa Fe running along the left side of the photo there. Mana Vista Drive is on the top of the photo, the north end. The red rectangle identifies the location of the detention basin, so this is going to be a large pit essentially that's dug into the earth there to retain stormwater flows and take the downtown area out of the flood zone. We anticipate awarding that project early next year and going to construction sometimes in the spring, assuming our redevelopment issues are resolved. But this could facilitate a skateboard location. The area that's shown in the orange again is the potential location for a skateboard facility, which would be in the upper part of the basin, that would, that would be inundated the least amount of time with a major stormwater flow. This would likely require a screen wall to separate.
John, Councilmember Gronky wanted to ask you a question.
Sure.
On this parcel, we own a good portion of that. We own beyond that red border?
We own all of the area within the red triangle, and then the triangular piece that's up near the top of the screen up in here.
Okay, so that's also city-owned.
All of the residential uses are privately owned.
Can you show me again?
This area is owned, as well as all of the detention basin area. The residential areas to the east there are privately owned.
And how close is the residence to that?
It's directly adjacent to the detention basin site, but it would depend on where we cited the park, if it were to be located there. It's, the actual home is about 20 feet from the edge of the detention basin property.
So in that particular site, does the skateboard park have to go right where it's located?
No, this is just a recommendation. So we're looking for a site. If this site is selected, we would do more evaluation of where the best location would be.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Staff is requesting the City Council's consideration of the three recommended sites that we've identified tonight, or other sites that are in the list that are provided as an attachment if this council's not interested in pursuing any of the sites that we selected or recommended. The council may request that our subcommittee reconvene to address additional concerns or additional criteria. And as I mentioned before, we're seeking one primary site this evening for the purpose of fundraising.
Councilmember Lopez has a question.
Thank you. A quick question, going back to the basin, can you? I noticed on that curve that you have there, if you have a skateboard park there, what recommendations would be made to protect the kids who are going there with those curves that way? Because I've seen people go off those curves. It's, it's just either right or left. They're dangerous. What, what have, what are we going to do about that if we use that particular one?
Every site has a number of challenges. That's one of the challenges we're going to face. But again, if this site's selected, there's a number of design criteria, they're going to go, going to go have, going to have to go into evaluating what would be best suited for that property. That would probably include some safety measures and some pedestrian access from South Santa Fe.
Okay, thank you, John.
Another idea just to bring forward that was recommended by the subcommittee is an idea of skate pods or skate spots. These pictures are good examples of locations where smaller skatable features are incorporated into parks that have other amenities available to the public. These facilities can include public art that can be skatable and, you know, provide for the uses that are being pursued tonight by the coalition and the committee as a separate improvement from the skate park. The committee wanted to make it, make the council aware that we're not trying to replace a skate park facility with the skate pods, but the coalition was very firm in trying to bring this issue forward for the council's consideration, that if a skate park maybe doesn't go forward, that at least we consider skate pods or skate spots, or if a skate park does go forward. park does go forward, that we still consider these types of facilities in future improvements or park improvement projects. Some cost considerations I wanted to identify, as we identified in the staff report, there's a cost estimate provided of a half a million to a million dollars. This is purely conjecture at this point, based on what we assume would happen, but these costs are unknown and they're largely dependent upon the site, so if there were bathrooms required, if there were off-site improvements, if there was parking, all of those things would have to be calculated into a price. Mr. Fort Mueller can correct me, but I believe the cost for the last skate park where we just put in the actual facility was around $400,000, and that included the fencing and some of the associated facilities, but it didn't require significant offsites. So the staff's estimate of a half a million to a million dollars assumes there would be some offsites, and with each of these project sites that we've identified, that would likely come to fruition as part of our evaluation, as Mr. Lopez's question points to. We want to make it clear that we're not proposing use of any public funds at this time. We're simply trying to identify a site to allow the coalition to pursue private funding or grant funding as it comes forward. And as I mentioned before, designation of a site is critical to that effort. In summary, the committee recommends selection of one primary site, or the council's direction in consideration of other sites, and that completes my presentation. Thank you.
We have about 15 speakers. Do you want to hear the speakers first, or do you want to... You have questions? Speakers? Okay. Okay, we will start with Tim Lenz, followed by Kerry Cotton.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, City Council, City Manager Gildert, City Attorney Piper and staff. My name is Tim Lenz. I'm a resident here in Vista, and I'd like to take a few moments to talk about the proposed skate park. I think that the skate park in Vista is a good idea for the simple fact that it will get the skaters off the streets, parking lots, and back alley loading docks they currently use at risk of being run over or hurt because of their proximity to traffic. To this, I think we can all agree. However, if the proposed skate park is going to be paid for, operated, or maintained in any way with public funds, funds generated by taxpayers and businesses here in Vista, then I'm opposed. The coalition should raise 100% of the money needed for the project from private contributions and not depend on the city to loan or lease them the property. Also, putting the skate park at Brangle Terrace Park near a neighborhood shouldn't be considered for a few good factual reasons. Reason number one, noise. It's a fact that skaters will generate noise. I bet if you talked to the neighbors behind City Hall, next to where the old skate park was, they'd tell you the same. Reason number two, trash. Skaters will produce trash that won't always make it into the trash can. Who will clean up after them? A city employee, perhaps? How much will that cost? Reason number three, crime, such as fights, vandalism, and graffiti. Stories of fights and vandalism at the old skate park are well documented. As far as graffitis, skaters seem to mysteriously attract it wherever they congregate. Who will pay for the service calls to the sheriff's department and the graffiti cleanup in and around the skate park? Reason number four, home values. After contacting a highly reputable, longtime realtor here in North County, my suspicions were confirmed. According to this realtor, homeowners that live around Brangle Terrace Park can expect anywhere from a 5% to 10% drop in their already depressed values. I'm sure if the homeowners around Brangle Terrace Park were made aware of this, of the aforementioned facts, they would have come to tonight's meeting. I'm also sure that if Brangle Terrace Park is left on the list of proposed sites, the homeowners around the park will be more than willing to sign a petition against it. Please don't use any public funds to pay for the skate park, and please take Brangle Terrace Park off the list of potential skate park sites. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kerry Cotton, followed by Bob Campbell.
Madam Mayor, City Council, I'm a little nervous being part of the necessary evil of this world, so talking tonight. My name is Kerry Cotton. I'm an attorney, and my office is right across the street. I'm part of the necessary evil of this city. I've been a long-term resident of the city. I am not here to oppose skateboard parks at all, but I am here to oppose the Wildwood Park location as a possibility. Wildwood Park, while small, is one of the most beautiful parks in the city. It's regularly used for family gatherings, birthdays, and even weddings down there. And when you drive by on weekends and see the families celebrating down there, it's actually a beautiful sight, and I would hate to see anything happen to that location and affect the ability to use that. I'm also very concerned about the safety. That is one of the most traveled intersections in the city of Vista. When the park was out here, just behind City Hall, for those of us who live up this hill, a number of times, you'd be hitting your brakes with these skateboarders that would come zipping across, not paying attention, whether you're hearing it in your offices or whether you're seeing people or just doing it yourself. And sometimes you even see them... They do amazing tricks on these skateboards, but sometimes they lose control, and those things go just shooting out into the street. And so I'm really concerned about having that at such a busy intersection as we're talking about. I'm also here somewhat on a selfish motive. My office is right across the street. There are four big buildings over there, and our building managers have calculated that when we had the skateboard park over here, we were averaging collectively $500 a month in damage. We would have lights go out, shrubbery, damage, extra trash having to be picked up. And so, and that $500 stopped when you got rid of the skateboard park across this, right here. I want to be able to conduct my business in a quiet fashion. I don't really want to have people zipping through the parking lot and worried about hitting people. I also want to point out that Vista lacks a lot of high-quality restaurants, and La Paloma is one of those. And I'm sure all of you have eaten out there on their patio, and frankly, I don't want to eat on that patio and be hearing skateboarders. It's a nice setting. You have the creek going by, and I think it would be a detriment to do that. I think the city here needs to encourage the businesses and not hurt them. We love the creek. We love the potential creek walk. I'm concerned about how a skateboard park would also affect the extension of the creek walk in the future. We've also talked about the money. Obviously, that's going to be a huge issue of where the money is going to come for this. But if there is a skateboard park in our future, and I hope there is, I hope it's not at Wildwood Park. That's a beautiful park. It's a family park. I sort of disagree a little bit with council about when you have a dedication in the 1920s that says this is to be a park. I don't think it was envisioned as a skateboard facility, and that it could in fact revert to the original owners.
We have to wrap up your...
I am-
You have a red light.
I have a red light, okay. I apologize, but I do wish to say I don't want Wildwood Park used in that way. Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Kerry. Bob Campbell, followed by Mike Sims.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. First, I'd like to thank Mrs. Gildert for her years of service and dedication to the community, the region, and the state. You've done a marvelous job. Thank you. I could just say ditto to what Mr. Cotton said. I represent Buena Vista Associates, which is a group who've owned property here in the commercial center across the street since 1979. In fact, there's groups that have owned it earlier in the building that Mr. Cotton is in. We really appreciate the fact that the Rancho is adjacent to those properties, and all the activities that take place there, including weddings and all kinds of other events, as well as my time at my office, which is across the street, is on weekends primarily, and I watch the families enjoying the assets there in Wildwood Park, the kids playing on the swings and other things, and the people going in and out of the Rancho. And I think any use added to that, not just a skateboard park, but any use that would change that balance, is really not a good idea. Plus, the safety factors that were mentioned, I think, are considerable, as some of these young men are really very agile, and those boards have flown out in front of my cars on several occasions. The vandalism is also a problem. While we had the skateboard park here at the City Hall, when it was closed, or there were other issues going on there, and they were forced out of that park, they would come into our parking lot, break the sprinklers, the lights, the shrubbery, and Mr. Cotton is correct, we were averaging $500 a month in damages and sometimes more than that. Going to Brangle Terrace Park, I agree that the property values, if you'd use the horseshoe pits, would be diminished considerably, plus the noise would roll up into the whole hillside there, and I see that as a problem. But you have to have visibility from the street. We've learned that from the city location that we had here. And I think that becomes the challenge, is finding a location where a skateboard park could be built. The Mana Vista Detention Center is certainly one of those, but in 2009, the council moved unanimously not to do it there, based on the objections of the residents. But I think that was sort of subject to the... Looking again at the design issue, one of you questioned whether that could be located elsewhere within that area and away from the residences. Maybe that's a possibility. But I think that might be another optional site to look at, but please don't put it in Wildwood or into Brangle Terrace. And in 1925, when this was dedicated to the county, this was indeed what, if anybody can envision a park in 1925, adding some other element other than what's there today would not be in compliance with that, in my humble opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mike Sims, followed by Barbara Peterson.
Good evening. Mike Sims, I'm a lifelong resident of the North County, born in Oceanside. Lived in Vista for 28 years. I don't skate, but I like to watch the skaters interact at these parks. Like the way that they respect each other, and they take turns, they help out younger kids learn how to skate, and they have a place that they can gather and socialize. It's their place. And there is a lot of problems with the old skate park, but doesn't mean that there's going to be new problems. And if we had a top-notch skate park, and they make really good ones now, it could benefit the community. It can bring in people for the businesses, and they could have events, and it would benefit the community. And I'd like to see it someplace central, so the kids... The kids take mass transit, the Sprinter, the buses, and they walk and skate to where the parks are, and they're out there exercising and having fun. And one more thing, I'd like to see a show of hands of all the people who would like to have a skate park in Vista. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara Peterson, followed by Sue Sims.
Hi. I manage the apartment building directly adjacent to the Vista adobe, and Mr. Fort Mueller and I have worked together in the past, because a lot of the younger people that inhabit the park would come over the adobe walls and into our property. And there are many skateboarders that live up Alta Vista Drive. One family in particular, who I know were in the adobe one night, set off the alarm and made their escape through our property. They thought that I turned them in, so they slashed all four tires on my car and keyed it down the right side. So I'm not objecting to a skateboard park. I feel that these people need a place to go, but they need a place that's large enough to accommodate them, and that is of sufficient... Requires sufficient different levels of expertise so that they can grow in their skateboarding activity. The objection that I had, living basically across from the old skateboard park, was that it was fairly secluded, it had many drug dealers in there, and there was no monitoring, so children were showing up there, especially 13- and 14-year-olds without helmets. There was supposed to be sheriffs overseeing the area, and that did not happen. I would be fully supporting if they did have proper supervision and had good enough facilities to attract them and keep them occupied, so they didn't have to go out into the neighborhood and cause destruction.
Thank you. Sue Sims, followed by Robbie Hanson.
Is that good? Okay. I just want to say that I've been working with a different set of kids than I hear described by the people that are against it in one way or another. I've been working with these kids that are skaters for the past year and a half, and I just want to let you know right off the bat that they are some of the greatest kids I know. They have got stick-to-itiveness, they're not spoiled, they work when they're asked to for the skate park, they've pitched in every step of the way, they go to meetings. We've organized for different kinds of activities, and oh, by the way, I've got a book full of what we've all been doing that I want to leave with you. They're great kids, and I'd like to suggest that the people that seem to think that they're just a bunch of street rats get to know one, or two, or three, because I've had a different experience. And I should add that some people don't know who I am. I'm a retired teacher. I taught with Vista Unified for 15 years. I was a high school teacher. So I know this set of kids pretty well, and they're wonderful kids. So I wanted to say that. I wanted to also let you know that I have collected signatures, me and the group. The Vista Skate Park Coalition have been collecting signatures at farmers' markets and different events around the town. We've got over 2,000 signatures of support for the skate park, so there's plenty of support out there. Now, they're not all from Vista. Some are from Oceanside, some are from San Marcos-Carlsbad, because that's what farmers' market attracts, but I figure you need to hear from them too, because we send our kids to their skate parks. So I would like to have their kids be able to come to ours. And I think that about covers that. But I'll leave that book with you, so you can take a look at it, okay?
Thank you. Robbie Hanson, followed by Mary Jo Poole.
I'm Robbie Hanson. Live at 1066 Chelsea Court, and I have been here the majority of my life, which is basically since 1955, so I've seen a lot of changes. And I wanted... I am for a skate park anywhere in Vista. I firmly believe that society as a whole does not come close to realizing how difficult it is for these kids, just to be a kid in this time. Any kind of tool that we can provide them, to these kids, to help them deal with everyday stresses makes their life a little bit better and the people around them. With these skateboarders, all they need is a piece of wood, a couple trucks, these are trucks, and some wheels. They don't need a coach, they don't need a bunch of players to show up. We need to give our kids a safe place to skate, where they can exercise their minds and their bodies. Thank you.
Did I question anything? I don't want to push the buttons.
Just don't push the button.
Okay, don't push the buttons, so at least not those buttons. So anyways, first of all, thank you, Mayor, and the council, and John-
Talk right into Mike. Talk right into it.
Okay. There you go. Thank you, Mayor. My name's Mary Jo Poole. I'm a resident here in Vista. I've been working with the Vista Skate Park Coalition for 16 months. I teach at Cal State San Marcos, including youth and society classes and criminology classes. I thank John Conley and Mr. Fort Mueller for being very gracious throughout this whole process and doing an excellent job on the presentation. I have to say, it's a new day for skating here in Vista, when the evil in Vista is lawyers and not our skaters. So I'm just really thrilled about that. With regards to Wildwood Park, I want to say, the first people that mentioned Wildwood Park that I recall were two fifth graders who actually came here-
that I recall were two five, two fifth graders who actually came here before the city council. And they chose Wildwood Park because they go there with their families. They go with their families and they know if there's a skate park there, they can go there with their families. Their younger brothers and sisters can be on the playground and their families can be, you know, having picnics and they can be skating. They're the ones that actually put that in our minds. As far as traffic and stuff and noise goes, Vista Way's, you know, noisy. Public parks are for kids and kids are there to make noise in public parks. I want to say that we support local businesses here. As Mr. Conley pointed out, we had a couple of areas, including across from the Pepper Tree and the Wave, that we thought as the coalition would be great for local business, including tourism and attracting people to this city to spend money in our local businesses. Those properties are redevelopment properties, so they were excluded. For the past 60 months while we've been working with these kids in this community, I have been like so impressed, okay? Like what Sue said, it's been clear that all we hear are these negative things. And I'm here to say for every negative story that is told, I am convinced there's 100 positive stories out there. And in March, and in March, when we had a community meeting at the library, we had about 100 people come. And one of my students came and he skated here in Vista at the Vista Skate Park, is now a college student. And here is what he wrote. "A painter gets a blank canvas to create a picture and musicians have studios to create music. Providing the skate park for skateboarders is giving them the proverbial canvas for them to express themselves. Every skateboarder sees every obstacle differently and there are endless ways to skate a single obstacle. The same trick can be done by everyone by the skate park, but everyone who does it with theirs. Without a skateboard park, they have no other choice than to look for blank canvases to express themselves through their skateboarding. So we want the council, hopefully we'll move forward with this project." Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Plantazo, followed by Frank Taylor. Is Judy here? Oh, I see, sorry. Didn't see you there.
Good evening. As president of the Friends of the Rancho Buena Vista Adobe, I feel I have to represent the Friends of the Docents and Docents and Friends of the Adobe and deserve a right to speak on behalf of the Adobe. These are some of the objections that we have of the proposed top pick of the Wildwood Park for a skate park. We remember all too well the number of fistfights and incidents with knives, drug paraphernalia, and drugs that occurred at the previous skate park behind the old city hall. Maybe the members of the search committee, which included members of the park city, of the city Parks and Recreation Committee and members of the city staff are too young to remember these fights, threats, and police involvement, or maybe they just choose to forget. Number two, we have approximately 10,000 third and fourth grade students who attend Adobe Days at the Rancho each year. This is done in connection with the schools and part of California history. Do you really want these children to be dodging between skateboarders who happen to be skateboarding down the Adobe bricks driveway, cutting through from one gate to the other to get to the skateboard park? The security of the children is also a tremendous concern to us. When the school program is in session, no one is there to watch or do what is going on along our pathway. If you honestly listen to your own employees, you would hear their fears about this proposed project. We know from our experience that the skateboarders who jumped the fence and locked gates to gain access at the old skate park park, do you really think they won't do so to get to this one? Plus, the theft of the Adobe has been nil since the removal of the old skateboard park. We foresee a tremendous uptake in this if you proceed with this idea of building the skateboard park here. We also worry about our historic old cobblestone pathway, imported bricks from over 100 years ago. Knowing that the skateboarders will see this as something of a challenge and a cool thing to do, again, a great way to skate through the Adobe to reach the park. Our little elderly docents will be no match for teenagers and some older skateboarders going through full speed when they try to stop them. That is, if I have any docents left when you construct this park. If you're considering putting a skateboard park in a location near the busiest intersection of town, how can this possibly be in the interest of any safety, in the interest of anyone's safety, in the interest of safety for anyone? Skateboarders will be in the street, in the path of cars. Many children, our citizens, will be put at risk. It is impossible to get in and out of Wildwood Park now because of traffic. What will it be like when you put in a skateboard park? I can only imagine then what it will be like then. Are you going to be putting in another stoplight? This will only slow down traffic along East Vista Way even more.
Can you wrap up for me? Because your lady's red.
Wildwood Park is currently used by the public now. Why do you want to change it? I believe when the Knights gave the park to the citizens of Vista, they gave it to be used by everyone, not just an individual group.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy. Frank Taylor, followed by Catherine Womack.
Frank Taylor, and located in 1929 Sunrise Drive in Vista. I'm also a property owner adjacent to the detention basin. We have commercial properties there. I've been in the city of Vista for 40 years now. I'm not against skateboarders in the area. I am against the site of the detention basin. This has been reviewed before. The city, they've kicked this around for over a year. They've changed sites there like three different times they tried to place it. The situations that came up there was the residential area was against it because it was so close to the residential area on Monte Vista. The commercial properties up and down South Santa Fe. We talked to a lot of the business peoples. They were all against having a skateboard site there for some of the reasons that some previous people spoke about. I don't think I need to go there on that. And the site that they're talking about there, I don't know if they could bring up the picture of that Monte Vista site. Yeah, the site, as you see it, it sits in behind and down a hole in the ground behind properties. It's kind of like the old skate park was behind the city hall before. It's not conducive for, you know, being exposure, people seeing what's going on there, that type of stuff. It's not a park site or something where you have oversight like a lot of our other sites in town. Like I said, we did take a survey in the area and the majority of all the people were against that, that particular site. And the Monte Vista Road, as you see up there, is a very dangerous curved road. Everybody's aware of it, the city's aware of it. There's no plans in the redevelopment, in the detention basin of doing any improvements up there. There's no sidewalks, there's, you know, no facilities like that. It's not good for parking. And they, I don't believe there's anything on, in a plans to improve or change that road at this time. I've been told that by the city. So with that in mind, I just, I oppose that location. I, we went out a year ago when all this started with some of the other people and looked at other sites, Oceanside, San Marcos, Escondido, and what I looked at. And the majority of them, all of them are park sites where they have oversight, park rangers, police driving in and out all the time, lots of people. And it's not only that, there's other people there, families that'd be there. Their kids might be skateboarding, they have other things to do and all that. This site, it's not that. It's not a park and it's, I just feel that it's a very, very poor choice. And I, that's what I have to say on that, okay?
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, Norm Hallis, followed by Chuck Rabel. I thought Chuck left, I don't see him.
Norm Hallis, Mayor, Council, Staff.
Did Catherine Womack come?
Hmm?
Yet. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, after Norm, Catherine, okay? Is that a good deal?
I'll yield.
No, it's okay, go. It's okay, Norm.
Well, as a Parks and Rec Commissioner, I realize what a tremendously difficult job you've got. And the commission in total is so supportive of the skate park. But the issues that have been brought up this evening obviously requires that we continue to look and find a place that will really work. I'm involved with the Adobe. I understand their concerns. Difficult to find a place that is both safe and doable. And if we can't reach it tonight, then I think let's just keep trying. The little pocket parks that we talked about would be a good solution, but I think we need a main park somewhere. And thank you for hearing us, for working with us. But I think maybe our job's not done yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Okay, Catherine. Sorry, I was, look, I have all these cards I have. I feel like I'm playing cards here. I have lots of cards to flip over.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Judy and fellow council members. My name's Catherine Womack. I'm a resident of Vista for the last nine years. And I'm a parent advocate and a member of the coalition striving forward and strong for a park in Vista. My concerns are that we have some locations that have been specified. And it sounds, and it's going on in this room right now, that there's going to be oppositions regardless of what site we suggest or that you allow us to be at. The oppositions that we're getting in this room are very negative and I don't understand them. Skateboarding is a passion, it's a lifestyle. I can remember eight years ago, before my son drove, I lived in Oceanside. And I would drive him in and pick up his friends along the way and we'd come to the skate park here. And on the way home, I would stop and get gas, I would frequent the grocery stores and we'd stop and get something to eat. Revenue, my money, I lived in Oceanside, but I was dropping money in Vista. Wherever you put the skate park, if it's next to a business, it can only enhance that business. Restaurants, attorneys, they're customers, they're clientele, are residents of Vista. Those clientels have families, those families have kids, and some of those kids skate. So to come into this room opposing a situation that is a need, should already be picking a site, breaking ground, you cutting the red ribbon. The oppositions in this room are absolutely shocking. We have a great bunch of people here that have been working on a positive note, working functions at the Go Home Adobe, Villa de los Muertos, working the Vista Rod Bud. Funding, trying to get funding and donations all on our own just for this cause that is desperately needed. Skaters are skating in the street. You hear complaints about parking lots being used, stair rails, everything like that. Well, get them a skate park. That's where you put them, in a safe skating environment. Get them off the street, put them somewhere where it's safe. Put it somewhere where it's close to public transportation, where these young kids don't have to skate through other businesses and traffic areas to get somewhere. That's why we want it next to public transportation. Wildwood is a great location. Yes, it is busy, but it's centrally located. Monte Vista, I believe, was brought up to the board, this is the second time, and that was opposed by the residents. You're going to get a lot of that, but really, realistically, the bottom line is Vista needs a skate park. We need a safe zone. And it's a situation that would help everybody in the community, not just the skaters, but all the business members. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I'm looking, I don't see Chuck Rabel, I think he must have left. So then it would be Connie Hubbard, followed by Charles. Here comes Connie, okay. Charles, it looks like Willis. Chuck Willis?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and the council. My name's Connie Hubbard. I'm a longtime Vista resident and business owner in Vista for 45 years. I just want to say upfront that I am really glad that they are starting to look for a skateboard park. The kids have needed a place ever since the other one was torn down for City Hall. And it's time to give them one, but I agree, we do need to look for another place. I'm not in favor of Wildwood Park. I've been associated with the Adobe since it was purchased by the city in 8990. I'm an original ad hoc committee person, so I helped plan the school program that is there now. I've been associated with them now for the 20 years. It is a historic site in Vista and one of the venues for weddings, which brings a lot of money into the city for helping the upkeep of the Rancho. Weddings can only be held on Saturdays or Sundays, not during the week. And so that's just when most kids are going to be at the skateboard park. Our feeling is that the noise level is going to be such that you're not going to be able to have a wedding with clacking of skateboards and kids yelling and screaming, which is typical of skateboard parks and kids having fun. So the same thing with special events. We have our special events on weekends only. Everything is held outside because you can't hold things inside. It's an outside venue for special events and that's how we make our money to keep the Rancho moving along. We are the keepers of this historic house. The park was dedicated for families. They just put up the new playground equipment in there and new restrooms. And it's nice to see people down in the park when we walk to the Rancho. We've been given some extra parking at the fire station for our docents. Our docents are all in their 70s and 80s and we even have a couple in our 90s. I am concerned of maybe them getting hit with skateboards flying out from under kids. That is a real concern. We had one docent that was hurt over in Carlsbad just by a skateboarder. And that was many years ago and she's still paying for that. The other thing is the traffic going around, that's a busy traffic area, always has been and has gotten worse down through the years. And I think people are going to be tempted to look over into the park, see the kids playing, and it could cause more traffic problems there. We have had people coming over the walls of the Rancho and vandalizing the Rancho. This is especially a big concern. Another concern is the people right now that are cutting through the Rancho from one gate to the other now that we have the two gates. And I think it's going to get worse with kids that are coming maybe from eucalyptus, cutting behind Civic Center here and heading right on down through the Rancho. This is a concern from, for our lady who takes care of the Rancho during the week. She's a little bit afraid now, so what's it going to be with more and more people cutting through? So these are just a few of the concerns.
Could you wrap up? Because you're.
Yes, we just need to look for someplace else. I don't think Wildwood Park is the answer to the kids having a skateboard park near an historic site. But I am in favor of them having a park somewhere close. Thank you.
So Charles Willis, followed by Richard Ralph.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Charles Willis. I live at 270 Osborne Street out in the county area. My business is in the La Paloma Restaurant, building above the kitchen in La Paloma Restaurant. Now, I'll have to echo that Wildwood Park is not the place for a skate, skate park because of the traffic, the intersection there. It only has crosswalks in a couple of different directions and you're going to have youngsters trying to cross that traffic there. The only thing that I can say positive about Wildwood Park is the close proximity of the paramedics whenever the kids get hurt. I do think that the youngsters need a place to practice their skateboarding, but Wildwood Park is not it. Wildwood Park contains a 1.93 acres gross area and about 80% of that area is inundated by a normal flood. About 80% of that park is inundated by the AE zone, according to FEMA map and studies that I've done over the years. Now, as I understand, the area required for a skate park is about a half acre, which would take up 25% of the gross area of the park. And you don't have that much net area. And you don't have that much net area in order to work with. It would impinge on the, the trail, the walking trail down from Vale Terrace, which is now completed up to the border of the Adobe Rancho. And so it would impinge on the extension of that trail. And plus the fact that the number one thing that I found that I called Mr. Connolly's attention today, I learned today over luncheon about the reverter clause and dedications of facilities of this type. And this particular reverter clause says it's to be used for parked purposes. And it says that any change in that would revert back to the owners. Now, the argument can be made that a skate park is a part of a, a park use. But I don't think so in this, because this was dedicated in nineteen twenty-five. And the earliest that I can find any verifiable, verifiable history where skateboards were part was in the nineteen fifties. So I don't think they were talking about a skate park in nineteen twenty-five here. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Ralph? And you're our last speaker.
Yes, I am. Thank you. I'd like to say hello to my neighbor. Apparently I haven't met you yet. But I do live right across the street from Bringle Terrace Park. We just moved in, I don't know, less than nine months ago. There's certainly a need for a skateboard park. I'm not sure that a skateboard park actually meets the need, because I'm not sure how many kids are going to go to a straight skateboard park instead of skating through the local shopping center. We've, we've certainly seen them just right there at the Round Table Pizza skating down the... They have a spotter, which is convenient, to keep the kids from skating off the steps and into the road when a car is coming. So at least they're considering safety. So maybe there isn't a very strong need for the fire department, although I did consider that. I, I have to ask, just generally, if there's not to be any city money involved in this, why the city is involved in siting it? I'm just curious about that. Why it isn't... If there's going to be half a million to a million dollars spent on a skate park, why that can't include acquisition of a half acre property somewhere? As far as Bringle Terrace Park, I have a concern about the safety of the skateboarders getting to and from the park. I'm sure you're all aware that there are no sidewalks and no streetlights on, on Vale Terrace at the park. And that there's a nice slope there, though, which is very attractive to skateboarders, if I understand how this works. And so I'm, I'm concerned that at night, it's in a valley, Vale Tar, Vale Terrace right there. I'm concerned that at night, cars, skateboarders, not a good combination getting to and from the skateboard park. So if you consider putting it on site number two, I would certainly encourage you to include money for sidewalks extra wide and streetlights to ensure the safety of the skateboarders, pedestrians, and the people driving there. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Council. Councilmember Lopez.
Heard a lot of comments here tonight and over the past couple of years. And all you boys and girls, you're bad kids, man. You know, you're really bad. You're bad. Yeah, I'm old. I'll admit it. I've got gray hair, but it's all right. But I'm very healthy, though. Thank you. But what I see here is that, that, that you've made a great effort in looking for a, an area to put a skateboard park. I'm a believer that we need one, and I support you very much. But sometimes, I don't let my grandson ride his skateboard, because my son got hurt when he was a kid and got hurt. And since then, I don't believe in skateboards. But yet, I like seeing kids who are very talented. Matter of fact, I go on TV and I watch skateboarders in the competitions. And I'm telling you, you really have to be in good physical shape to be riding those things. And that's what's important, is that you be in physical shape for that. Now, let's talk about, first about the, the three that are suggested. Having a sport, a skateboard park, this is to staff, on Vale Terrace, that money, that, that, the grant money and all that, is it still available to people to park, to a park if they decide to put it on Vale Terrace? Grant money?
Grant money can be applied just about anywhere. Generally, the requirement is that you have to have ownership of the property. And it has to be, there has to be a project at hand for the grant money.
But don't we have a criteria of, of different areas where more are actually qualified for grant money?
A number of the grants are tied to socioeconomic conditions in the surrounding area. And so, yes, there are certain areas of town where you probably have a higher percentage of grant opportunities than others.
Well, I've heard the comments that, you know, sidewalks, signals, it's too far out there, it, we don't want it here, we don't want the noise on Vale Terrace. And Vale Terrace is a park where, you know, I often see a lot of people up there relaxing and, and, you know, thinking things out. And it's a place to be peaceful during the week. And it's, it's an area that, you know, that I wouldn't want to see a park up there. Then we come down to Wildwood. That area right there, I believe they're right as far as it might revert back to the owner, but the owner's no longer around. And there's so much that's going to be going on there. I believe the Adobe is eventually going to put a, a big barn right across the creek from it, where they'll be doing a lot of events and things. And also, they're short on, on parking in that area. And so that particular spot, you know, I, I... Some of the speakers said, well, you know, not in my, my backyard. But take it down to South Santa Fe and find a space down there. Same old, not in my backyard. But that's all right. The basin, the problem with the basin is that, is that it's in a hole. That hole, that basin is going to be dug out. And east of it, they're going to build that pad to where those commercial buildings are, eight to ten feet high. Plus, the basin will be way down in a hole. Who's going to protect and take care of young little kids who are down there when there's buildings above the road level and no one can see back there? I don't want to be responsible for the way, the way this country is today with weirdos. I don't, I don't want something happening there, because you'd have to have twenty-four hour protection there if you do it there. So that's out, as far as I'm concerned, too. Now, but I do have a couple of suggestions. They suggested across from Pepper Tree. But then in the report, it says that area is for the, what's it called? Memorial. It doesn't take the entire area for memorial, but that would be a good spot, because it's right there in town. It's next to the rail. Kids could jump on that and go and come. And maybe the businesses might not like it. But I really haven't had a lot of negative from businesses. And there's also an area with the Boys and Girls Club, which the Boys and Girls Club could support and work with you. It might not be as big as you would like it, but it is available. And, but I do have another suggestion to you that I thought about. And first of all, I'm going to ask Mrs. Ritter, whether the property we're behind, is it Arby's? That you used to lease, is it, has it been sold?
No.
Okay. Well, that property that, it's a tilt-up commercial building. Now, Mr. Connolly, could a skateboard park go inside that building?
Yes.
Yes, it could. Okay. Mrs. Ritter, how many square feet are in that huge building?
I don't remember, but it has, it has half a gym. I mean, there's, it's, it's big.
It's big. Now, if you cleared all that bottom, and would it accommodate a skateboard park?
Yeah, probably would.
Probably would.
But we don't, we don't own it.
I know we don't own it.
But it's...
I know we don't own it. Now...
It's reasonable.
This is just a suggestion I'm making.
For sale.
Okay. This is suggestive for a piece of property that can be bought at this time, can actually put a park in there. It has plenty of parking on the north side, but that would be discussed later, a different, I don't want to discuss about, discuss that right now. But it has potential of having parking. Now, what I think is that, that no matter where you go in this town, you're going to have people yelling and screaming. And they're always worried about the bad language. Young folks, quit using the bad language around these areas so that people won't say things about it. Now, I think that, that, I know we don't own that property, but I think it could be bought and have an indoor park instead of outdoors, you know? And I'd be willing to support it. We, there's got to be a way of either maybe trading that property. I'm sure the people that have had that property have been trying to get rid of it, and they haven't been able to get rid of it. Maybe we can work a deal with staff. Maybe we have a piece of property we can trade. Or let's look at that, the building's built already. You could have year-round skateboarding in that building. I don't own the property. It's in my backyard. I don't care. And you know what? I'm behind you, so let's keep driving. Now, one of the things that does bother me about this whole thing is that we decided to have Propel here in the city of Vista. And it's, I'm not saying to make fun of the city or anything. But this building was designed and built in less than a year and a half. You've been with a skateboard park looking for an area for longer than that. Let's work with the city. And city, let's work and find a spot for these kids. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Nobody else's name. Okay, Councilmember Gronky. Oh, no, it's Mayor Protem Gronky.
Not yet. January, January.
Oh, it's January?
Starts January the first.
Is that right?
We have to be patient.
Oh, okay, Councilmember Gronky.
Be patient. Okay. This has been going on for quite a while. And Mr. Lopez is exactly right. It's been going on for three years now, four?
At least.
Three years, okay. It's a pretty controversial subject, because when I got to my office tonight, there I had four letters from individuals opposing four different sites. So here we go again. I, I do want to say that I did visit sites in all the adjacent cities, Oceanside, Carlsbad, and San Marcos. And for, for the most part, they are within parks. But they're within parks that are usually flat, open, conducive to this type of, of use. I want to speak first against Wildwood Park. Wildwood Park, to me, is in the center of town. We've done a lot of work to improve the center of town, including this building, cleaning up Main Street, all the improvements we did down there. And then also, some of the considerations we heard tonight about traffic, too. In fact, I'd like to talk, call up our captain, if he's still out there. Could you please step in? While he's walking up, we've heard a number of speakers talk about the use of that park. And I know every time I drive by there, there's usually some, a large family group in there celebrating something. So it's utilized quite a bit. But Captain Rousseau, if I was to say that we talk about using that park as, as a, as a possible skateboard, skateboard park, what's, what's your thought on some of the traffic issues and pedestrian issues over there?
Well, it's already been mentioned by several people in here, and even some of the skaters themselves. The traffic is tremendous. It's one of our busiest intersections, one of our busiest streets in the city. And I think what our opinion is from the Sheriff's Department is that the traffic level there is not conducive to the skateboarders. Now, again, you guys have had the opportunity to work with them. Sounds like some really good kids and really fabulous people that really want this done. But that's such a small group. The other people that are going to come in and zip across the streets on the... What I think we're afraid, what I'm more afraid of happening is a, is a repeat of what happened on Thibodeau not so long ago. That's still deep in the hearts of many people in this community. And I see that with the traffic level in the Wildwood area, that the likelihood of a recurrence is, is very, very high in, in that area. Not that it's, we can guarantee it's not going to happen anywhere else, but the traffic level there is so intense. Kids are good, their kids aren't going to wait for the crosswalks. They're not going to wait for the green lights. They're not going to stop. I, tonight, on my way here, I was coming across the seventy-eight on Civic Center, across the bridge. I'm stopped at Phillips'. And I have a skateboarder come right down on the right-hand side of the road, right through the red light at Phillips'. Fortunately, he had the common sense to stop when a Sprinter was going in front of him. Sprinter passes through, skater waste continues, gets up to Hall of Vista there. And green light, a car making a right-hand turn. He almost hits a car. There's a little bit of an argument going on there. The driver of the car and the skateboarder got out and had a little brief discussion. Never got physical, but they were... But again, it's getting the pedestrian traffic and the vehicle traffic together. And the skateboarders using the streets to get to the parks is, is one of the issues. And at, at Wildwood there, I just think that going through the Adobe, coming across down by Chins, coming across from the, from the Magnet School there, I just think it's just a recipe for, for disaster in that area.
You know what? And, and then when you talk about Bringle Terrace Park, I, I see Bringle Terrace almost like the last site we had. You know, if you put it down there, those kids are just going to scatter to the wind.
If you put, if you put it in Bringle Terrace Park, the whole park will become a skate park.
Right.
It will. And I'm sorry, and it's not for the people that, that are very committed to this. It's the other people that are going to be brought in that don't have the ownership that a lot of you folks have in us. And you're going to be bringing in a lot of people from outside the city. And the whole park will become a skate park.
Yeah. You know, and, and someone's mentioned the patrons for the Moonlight. I think they'd be affected, too, because the, the kids would be using that all the time.
All the time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
One second before I leave, let's ask him a question. So because of traffic, you know, it's dangerous, correct?
It's very dangerous.
Okay. Have you been out to Monta Vista to look at that, that detention basin where it's going to be?
Yes.
Okay. Going to be down in there fifteen, twenty, thirty feet down in, in a hole, huh?
I don't know what it will end up being, but it will be somewhat recessionary.
Landscaping all around it? Okay. How do you protect in that hole for, for kids?
Well, as I understand, what I heard tonight is that's part of...
I want to know your opinion on that.
Well, I guess what I would ask then is what ownership and what responsibility are our skaters going to take to help police their own facility? It would definitely be a drain on our resources to keep that up. But in the planning stage, as I understand it, the next evolution would be to look at those issues and how do we mitigate those when we develop whatever area it is? So those would definitely be things that we would need to consider.
Thank you.
Gronky, are you, were you through?
I'm not done yet.
Councilmember Gronky isn't through.
Thank you.
Okay.
There is no really good site for a skateboard park in Vista.
There is no really good site for skateboard park in Vista, and, and, and what, there's twenty-some proposed sites?
Twenty-four. We looked at twenty-four.
Twenty-four, and we're down to three. We've looked at the detention basin before. I'm looking at it again, and, and just throwing it out there, you know, I, I think, as I look, as I look on the monitor right now, it would be easy to put a sidewalk on, on that south side of the street there, I guess it's south side. It'd be easy to put lights, streetlights there. It would be easy to design that, that skateboard park so that it's as far removed from the residents as possible. I would ask the people that are looking for the grant money, that you consider, um, some type of walls or something like that, sound walls to protect the residents around there, if you could do that? But that, that's, that's the direction I would go. I'd like to hear from my peers on that.
Councilmember Coles?
Well, this certainly is presenting itself as a great dilemma. And I wasn't on the council when all of this transpired a few years ago, and sites were looked at, and the, the problem, Vista is pretty well-built out for open space, there just is no open space left. When we were searching for, to cite schools, we really had to, uh, get creative and, and had a lot of problems, and I, I scoured every square inch of the district, which included parts of Oceanside as well. What, I guess my main question is, we're being asked tonight to identify a, a, a site so that, um, the group could go forward with grants, or request for grants or funding What is it, what timeline are we on? Do we need to decide a site tonight? Does, does that site become finalized, uh, once they use it in the, in the grant proposals? Or, or is it simply just a placeholder so that they can proceed with grants?
There's no timeline, we're simply trying to facilitate the coalition's request to find a site.
Okay, and then, part of that question is if, if we give a site for them to use as they're seeking grants, and a year, two, three down the road, when they begin to get some grants trickling in, would those grants be locked into the site that we select tonight? Or, not tonight, but the site that we would end up, uh, coming to grips with?
Most likely yes. I mean, typically, grants are tied to a project that has to be defined within a site, and there are criteria looked at, like property ownership and maintenance responsibility and things like that, so I would assume yes, in most grants. Private funding, no, but grants, yes.
So, what timeline would we like to be, I guess, they would like us to act tonight?
The coalition...
And I wish we could.
Coalition would like to establish a site as quickly as possible, but the city's in no, under no obligation at this point to provide a site. We're simply trying to start the conversation, find out what the council's, um, issues are or criteria are, see if there are concerns, which there obviously are. Uh, and if those concerns are validated by the council, then, you know, let's hear, if you have other recommendations, if you want us to look at redevelopment properties, if there are other types of criteria you'd like us to consider. And my recommendation would be to go back to the subcommittee and investigate those issues.
Well, a skateboard park does redefine an area. I mean, there's, I've, I've, as Councilmember Gronky, I've observed the skateboard parks in our area as well as other areas as well, and it does change the texture of, like Wildwood Park, I, I don't think it would be appropriate there for all the reasons that were discussed. It's probably the least, uh, piece of property that I would consider, of all the ones we're being asked to look at. But it, it is gonna impact the area where it's located. The other thing, and I know we've been, um, told many times, we need to get, get the kids off the street and into a park, and that's partially true, but this is not gonna get the kids off the street. They're still gonna be in the park in lots, they're still gonna be on sidewalks either getting to or from, and there will be people that wanna skate free, freelance anyway. They, they don't wanna be confined to a park, so that, that won't, won't really stop it. But it certainly would provide an alternative and a mechanism for enforcement agencies to, to direct young people to a, to a suitable place. And like Councilman Gronky, I, as much as I see the problems with the detention basin, it's the one area that is kind of open space, uh, it's, it's a blank slate for something to be planned and designed into it as we proceed with creating, uh, a necessary, um, open space that will remain open space. And it will, it contours could be designed in so that, uh, it, it could work twofold to catch water as well as to fight slopes for, for ramps and skates and that sort of thing. The, there, there are, there's no good place where the, the roadways nearby, uh, were, are any worse than this or any better than this. But it's probably of the ones that we're being asked to look at, the, the only one that I could reasonably consider, uh, at this time.
Mayor Protem Aguilera.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions. I don't know who to direct this to, I don't know if Mr. Connolly, or Mr. Fort Mueller, or maybe somebody from the committee. But we have twenty-four, uh, spots that were discussed, and they all have a ranking, and from, I guess, a question mark up to ten. There's a couple of spots that were not put on our agenda as possible locations that had higher scores than some of the places that were put on our agenda, so I'd like to know why that is, and if there would be opposition to some of those locations.
As we discussed in the presentation, there were a number of sites that were eliminated right out of the gate because they're private property or school district property, so that would apply to some of those. The remainder of them, I believe, are redevelopment sites where the redevelopment agency owns them and have, um, other plans for those sites, particularly the Veterans Memorial Park, which was already identified, and the restaurant pads that are adjacent to Frazier Farms. Those were two of the top sites that were recommended by the coalition. It's also important to point out, those scores that were provided, were provided by the coalition to the committee, so they didn't come from the committee, they came from the coalition as part of their research that they did before we met.
Okay. The lot number five between Yinxton and Connecticut, is that owned by redevelopment?
That is a city-owned property that's excess right-of-way, um, that was acquired when the street was widened, when North Santa Fe was widened, so it's a vacant city-owned property, it's not redevelopment agency-owned.
Okay. And that says in the notes that there's possible skate spot slash pod location?
So, we identified that site as a possible skate spot or pod because we didn't feel it was sufficiently sized to accommodate a skateboard park and parking and the necessary amenities that you'd need to serve a park on that site because of its size.
Okay. And then there was another location that, I can't find it on this list, I don't even know if it is a, a city-owned property, but it's next on the corner of North Santa Fe by Romeo's Car Wash. Is that city-owned right there, that parking lot, empty lot?
The, the parking lot in front of the current...
Operation Hope.
Facility of Operation Hope use. Yes, that is city-owned.
It's city-owned, we didn't consider it because it's primarily used for parking for Operation Hope.
Got it. And then the Boys and Girls Club, are they in consideration?
We looked at the Boys and Girls Club site, we didn't feel that the area that they would be able to dedicate to a skate park would facilitate it based on the slope and the small space, so it was not considered further based on the constraints that exist in that area today.
And I noticed that the Cananea in North Santa Fe was mentioned, but that's, we have a, a potential proposal for a project there, right?
Yes.
I don't think that would be...
Same issue, redevelopment, agency controls the majority of that property, as well as a private property owner who's in a contract with the agency to develop that site in the future.
Okay. I mean, I, I think, I think that the coalition needs to probably go back and discuss some different sites. I like, I like the idea of maybe starting with a, a pod and see how it works, you know, rather than, that gives an opportunity to see how it works, what, what doesn't work. Certainly gives them an opportunity to start, um, making their requests for money, for grants, and at the same time, doesn't necessarily commit us to a particular spot for the full-blown park. So, some of these pods, I think, are something we could consider, and I think that something not on South Santa Fe would be preferable.
Could I, could I ask one other?
Okay, I have, I have two, I have, Councilmember Lopez wanted to speak again, then Councilmember Coles.
I'm good.
Are you guys?
Yeah.
And then, and if, do you wanna ask her, do you want her to come up and ask her a question?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. The Boys and Girls Club, uh, property, I've been out there, looked at that, and seriously looked at that piece. When you go out there and look at it, it doesn't look very big, I know. But they own quite a bit of property beside that bank, those banks, you can put a couple of retaining walls towards the back and collect at least thirty percent more property on that. Yes or no, John?
That's true, but the majority of that property that's flat adjacent to those banks is in the railroad right-of-way.
Well, up to where that fence is, but you, there's retain walls all over the, all over the back parts of those homes. There's no retaining wall there, but it can be put up.
Absolutely, you could retain those slopes and create a larger...
And you could build those lot, that lot much bigger. I've looked at it, I, you know, I'm not an engineer, but, but I know, looking at that, what, what the possibility...
Well, let's put it this way, from the committee's perspective, we tried to focus on the sites where we thought it would be the most feasible from a location point and a, and a construction aspect. Construction of walls to retain those slopes would be significant, and the cost of the park there would be significant as a result of it, so that's the primary reason and the space that we didn't consider that site further. If that's the direction the council, to go back and look at, at the sites that we felt were too constrained, we'll be happy to go back and do that, as well as look at skate pot locations.
I, I like the idea, John, like John said, the, the pot, the, the smaller ones, to start off, let's get something going for these kids. But again, I would like you to at least look at that property on South Santa Fe, where that industrial building is, and really look at that, uh, I think it can be bought up, I know that the city doesn't wanna put any money, but at one time, the city did put half a million dollars aside for, for... A skateboard park. They promised it, and they say here, no, the city says no, but I was at the meetings when we were trying to get Propel through, and let me tell you, they promised you a skateboard park with half a million dollars. The economy has gotten tough, we took the half a million away. Now, there's no money, according to the city. So, uh, I think that we should look at these other, uh, areas, and I know that you need to find an area that is, qualifies for grant money, and, and when you do that, you can get a heck of a lot more money. So, thank you, I'm done.
Okay. Councilmember Coles?
Mayor Protem Aguilera, you, you piqued my interest in, in your thought about trying to identify a site that may not be as full-blown as would be the ideal, at least to give a placeholder for, uh, some grant writing opportunities so that these people can start focusing on something real, instead of a, a pipe dream. And, uh, when, when I met with members of that group some months ago, uh, we sat in the office upstairs and discussed all of the, uh, aspects of what would be needed, how, you know, what we've lost out on, and one of the things that was mentioned, I said, how many people typically are in the park at, when, when we had it, how many people were in there at, at, at a single time? And was told, uh, between sixteen and twenty-three, sixteen and twenty-three people skating. What would a pod, I mean, how many people, how many skateboarders could, could, um, have a good time in, in one of these pods?
It's, it's hard to say, I mean, I, you can... I, I would, based on the size of the, the pod, which on the examples we used were rather small, you're looking at two or three skaters, and really, one at a, a time, you can't have multiple people on, on, you know...
Well, that is different, and that, that wasn't quite the answer I was hoping for.
Well, it's all depending upon the size of the facility.
Depending on the size, two or three could be utilizing it, and mostly, if you look here, one per, on, on the examples of there, there's one multiple, that, there's like four people, but otherwise, you're looking at one person at a time using, utilizing it.
This is really the reason that we wanted to find a location for a facility, is it could accommodate a larger group. If you're looking at a pod concept, the idea would be that you'd have to do it at more than one location in order to really facilitate the need.
Okay, well, that, that didn't get me any further along.
Well, it's not to say we couldn't evaluate that further.
Okay. If you come up to the microphone and make it kind of quick, one question.
Yeah, pretty much. The, you know, the area across from the wave you guys have mentioned and then just poo-pooed out the door, uh, across from Frazier, that, that vacant lot, to us, that would be so perfect, because it isn't a recreational area, you know, it's a sitting, or a setting that is just made for recreation. You've got the wave, you've got the grecorian, everybody's kind of in the mood to play, you know, it seems to me it would be perfect, and I don't know why we can't make, you know, four thousand of our kids are skaters, why can't we make them a priority rather than a restaurant? You know, it just seems that... You know, sometimes some things are more important than money.
Okay, thanks. So, I guess I don't have any more speakers, so I guess it's my turn. Now, we're all there. I visited, I visited Carlsbad, and I also, I, I went over, I hadn't seen the park over in Mesa, and so I went over and got out of the car and walked up and looked at that this weekend, and it was, I think the thing that makes it work is it's in the middle of the, a park, and there's soccer games going on on one side and behind it, there were probably maybe twenty-five kids in there, and just so you know, only one had a helmet on, and the straps were hanging, so I was like, oh, because, you know, they don't, weren't wearing their safety helmet, safety equipment, but, but it was, I think it worked because it's very visible and there's lots of people around. I think that's, that's what the problem was with our other park, that it was kind of hidden back there, and, and we had so many problems, and, um, Wildwood, I think the Adobe is there, and I think La Paloma, you don't wanna sit on the, you know, the patio, you sit out there and eat, and you don't wanna hear skate, the skateboards, and I, they make noise, because I know, I live, um, actually, sometimes the skaters are in Sycamore Creek Park, and I can hear them, I live there, and I can hear them when they're way down in the park, I can hear them down there, knowing they're down there. But, um, so, Wildwood, this, the traffic and the restaurants and the, I just don't think that's a good place for it, and plus, that park is used. Every time I go by there, 'cause I live right that round there, it's always got people there. There's weddings there, there's a church service there, there's birthday parties, I mean, that's so used. Bringle Terrace Park, you have to skate down the street in order to get to, to that, and it's, now, it's still, it's kind of hidden in there, I don't think there's enough visibility on, on, in Wildwood Park, in Bringle Park, Terrace Park. The Monte Vista Basin, the same thing, there's not enough traffic, that is, that one's really, I think, hidden, and, and there's, when you look at the, the thing, there's a housing, there's not just a one house there, there's like right across the street, there's a bunch of houses, too, there, there's houses real close in there, so I just think those, those aren't, those, those three don't, I, I can't support, but, um, the only place that I, that I keep thinking of is the, along, I know a lot, everybody doesn't support that, along the rail line, they're across from Pepper Tree, and I actually talked to, you know, Danny Villasenor over there at Pepper Tree, and he thought it would be a great place to have the, the park, and so, um, you know, and I also talked to Sonic, and he's, at that one time, and I don't know if he still agrees with that, he said he would be happy to have it across the street, so I'm thinking, there's Memorial Park there, but it's lots of traffic going by there, it's very exposed, and people could, you know, I, I think it needs to be really, where a lot of traffic is and people go by all the time, to keep our kids safe, and to be, you know, it's right out there, so those are kind of my, that's my feedback, and so I, I would, I think one of the things was to send it back and to, wasn't that one of the things, to send, and, and the place that Frank was suggesting was My Old Fitness Club, that's why he's asking me the square footage, and I honestly don't remember, but it's a two-story, it's a very big, big facility, it could be, it could, could work, and it's, actually, the, the owner, it's very reasonable to, to purchase right now, he's been trying to sell it for a long time, so, um, that, but, but again, we just, they don't have any money, so I don't know how we would purchase it, but that would, that's, that would be another place. would be another place that would be, be, maybe supported. So with that, I guess I want to know, what, what is our action that we're expected to do here today? Maybe we need to go to...
I think what I'm hearing is that the SOE committee has to reconvene and come back and visit you at some point in the future with some different recommendations. I understand the three locations that we recommended are not preferred. Some of the things I heard tonight that we probably need a little bit of input from the council on are, are you willing to have the committee consider redevelopment properties, primarily the park site across from the Pepper Tree, you know, the reason the committee stayed away from that is because we understood there was a plan for a Veterans Memorial Park there, and we didn't feel like a skateboard facility in a Veterans Memorial Park was going to be the best combination, but if the council wants us to revisit that...
Is the Memorial Park going all the way from the corner of Main Street, how far down is that, is that planned on going?
The plan is for the park to go essentially from where the used car dealership is, across from Pepper Tree, all the way down to Main Street.
So, that's a pretty long area, I, I don't know if that would work or not, but...
It is a fairly large area, and it could be broken up into some different bits, but again, we had to receive council direction before that that was the primary use of the property, and so if you'd like us to further consider that, we can bring that back.
It's up to you guys.
Well, that, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, but we're looking at a, a map here to, to kind of get a picture of it, and so I was asking about this, this piece of property or this location that you mentioned, and trying to look at it, and wondering if it had...
I think we have a map here, that's city, the city redevelopment properties are shown on here, we have this in case this issue came up, but the areas that are all shown in the green, right across from the Pepper Tree, right in here, that little finger of space between the rail line and South Santa Fe, that's the area where, I'm sorry, those are properties, it's the area in the yellow north of that, this is the area where the, the Memorial Park is proposed.
And I, I'm, I've got, I can put this on satellite and zoom in, so I can see...
We don't have a good close-up of it?
I do, I've got a good close-up of it right here, but...
As I've had.
The, and the issue of the Memorial Park, that, that could be somehow modified?
Well, we have, we have a, a property that was donated...
Right.
And committed, and so, that, if the council would want to utilize that property for something else, there would need to be discussions and negotiations with the family that committed that property, and, and exchange it for some other visible, viable lot for a Memorial Park, and...
Well, could you use the Memorial, Memorial Park at, at the one end, and then a skateboard at the other end, or anything?
Well, all of it would have to be designed and reviewed, you'd have to look to see how, how much that you'd want to do.
If the donor was willing, I mean, that's...
If the donor's willing, and so, that's, that's, it's, it's all discussions that we'd, we could enter into, and also is, is that, you know, it's not just a, in the Vista Village, the, the vacant parcels there that are owned by the city, it's not just the matter of being able to utilize for, those for restaurants or for a skate park, it's the whole negotiations also with the owner of the surrounding property, the covenants of those property, we would not necessarily be able to utilize that for anything other than what was intended because of the surrounding owners, just like they, they prohibit certain uses, and they have control over that, and that was the agreement within the, the whole development of Vista Village, so even though it's nice and flat, and it's good, visible, and, and it would be, it's, it's a really ideal location, but it may be a non-starter, we'd have to go back and look at those agreements, because I am pretty sure that there are restrictions of what we can place adjacent to those businesses. They, they have the veto over it, just as they have the veto over what goes into the old linens and things, a number of the, the properties there have a veto over what we do with our property.
Yeah, and we had that experience with the medical school that was going to go in, you know, we were going along, and all of a sudden, part of the agreement with surrounding owners prohibited that, so we had no control over that.
Okay, well, and I would say, I would want to check with more business people, I mean, I just, just as a preliminary check, you know, I, I want, before I went forward with it, but it would be something we could look into, and Councilmember Aguilera?
Yeah, I actually...
Mayor Protem Aguilar.
Oh, Mayor Protem Aguilar.
For the next hour, or whatever, however long we're going to be here.
Sorry, last meeting.
I did, I actually did speak to a couple of business owners downtown, and I didn't speak to the burger owners, because I kind of already knew how they felt, because they want to sell more burgers and fries and sodas, but I spoke to some of the other businesses that were in downtown, and they were not in favor. One particular business, a jeweler, didn't see a whole lot of benefit to his business for a skate park being downtown. So, the, the biggest reason I think I would be opposed to that particular spot is, we've got a railroad track on one side, and hopefully, a very busy street on the other side, people going to our downtown redevelopment area, and I think there's going to be some safety concerns, if we're worried about Wildwood Park being dangerous, you know, add a, a Sprinter to the mix, and a freightliner in addition to that, and I think we've got some potential for danger.
Okay. So where are we? Oh, Mr. Councilmember Lopez, I can't tell, there's names all over the place here. I can't tell who's next, Councilmember Lopez.
Okay, thank you. That property you said across from Sonic, Mr. Redder, is the old oil company owned several buildings there, and I believe that that was the property that was exchanged for the memorial. But the property where Broadway, it's a separate piece of property, it was not donated to the memorial or exchanged for the memorial, so it leaves nearly half an acre there, plus Santa Fe is going to be made smaller, so it will give you more room, at least another fifteen to twenty feet more on that street, that would help that property as a bigger piece of property. I've talked to several people in the area also that don't mind it being there, so there's people who, you know, you can't really make a decision on just one person, you know, it's, you know, you've got to look at, at the whole thing. I think, I think that, that it would be a great asset to Sonic, to Five, Five Guys, I mean, some of these kids could go to the wave, they're there, they can go to the wave, skate, skate park, play their skateboard and jump into the water, you know, it's, I mean, there's a lot of things that could be done there, and, but if you can't make a decision tonight, at least you've gotten some, some information there on a couple of spaces that you could actually go out and revisit and look at it, let's not really make a decision tonight on, on this, because I think that the coalition would probably like to think about it too, yes or no, you know, so, because each spot that you go to is going to have problems, and, and if you decide on the basin area, which I don't mind it going out there, because it's away from my property, I mean, I mean, it's, I mean, I own property there, but I don't care, but I don't care, but what bothers me is that the danger of not the traffic, but it being down in a hole where some little kid is there and something happened, you know, you know, I just, I would not want to be responsible for that, and I just, you know, it's, it would be dangerous. The other two areas are two areas that, that I don't think would be a good idea, and again, you need grant money. The city doesn't have money, where are we going to get the money? They don't have all the money, so let's get those grants and let's, let's revisit that.
Can we just send it back?
I mean, we can bring it back next mon...
Can we just send it back to the...
Bring it back next month, or...
Mayor, if I may, I think we understand the concerns of the council, we've also heard the potential to look at the strip between the railroad tracks in Santa Fe, we can consider that, we'll look at the constraints and the agreements that we have with the property owners. We also understand the council's interested in looking at skate pod or spot locations that are smaller, where maybe we can facilitate a smaller facility, we'll look at those criteria. I think it'd only be fair to notify the surrounding properties of other sites that we'd like to look at, consistent with what we did tonight, to give everybody a fair opportunity to have their input, and we'll come back and revisit it with the council.
And the Boys and Girls Club too, I think.
We will do that, too.
Yeah, okay.
Just one last comment.
Councilmember Coles.
So, does that mean that we will talk to the memorial people to see if they would give...
We would definitely enter into a conversation there to see, but what we would want to do is, is to also say that if that's not going to be their site, then where is going to be their site, and so we would need to look at those options, we don't want to contact them and say we're going to take that away, but we, and we will look at all, all of our other potential constraints that we think we have, and maybe they aren't there, maybe they are, so we'll, we'll, you know, consider all of those, and, but bringing it back within a month would be a bit...
Too soon.
Too soon.
Okay. Okay, so, are we done with this item? Somebody say yes. Yes, yay. Okay. Thank you all for coming. I think we, you know, talked it to death tonight, and we'll, but we'll keep looking for a place for you guys, I, I, I mean, I think that, we're committed to that. Do we need a break, or can we just move right along to the hookah lounges? Moving on to D3, if you guys could kind of be quiet, so we can... Our meeting is, hey Frank, we're, you guys, we're still in a meeting, so get someone else to sign, the, for the students in the back somewhere. Okay, we, we have to, we have to continue our meeting, we're, our next subject is our outdoor smoking lounges as an accessory used in a commercial zone, hookah lounges.
Thank you, Mayor, this is an issue that we've discussed in the past, what I wanted to just give you an idea of what an outdoor smoking lounge is, this is also referred to as a hookah lounge, the ideal is that you provide a communal pipe that can be used for smoking tobacco, typically, these are facilities where locations will provide the pipes and the paraphernalia for use of the customers and sell the tobacco, and they'll use them in a group setting. Some background, the city council banned smoking lounges in 2009 as a primary use, we had a number of commercial uses, uses that we reviewed at that time, and smoking lounges was specifically called out by the council and requested not to be permitted within the commercial zones, and so we've enforced that ban since then. During that time, we've received some requests for smoking lounges or hookah pipes as an accessory use to an otherwise permitted use, such as part of a restaurant use, and we've enforced a similar ban and, and considered the same restriction as what was placed in 2009 for a primary use, but in consideration of those requests, we wanted to come back and revisit with the council to ensure that we're receiving the appropriate direction, and once we receive that direction, we feel a code amendment is in order to either allow for or verify the prohibition that was brought forward in 2009, and that completes my staff presentation, thank you.
Okay, any, Councilmember Coles, is that you? Are you, for last, okay, Councilmember Gronky.
I have three speakers, do you want to hear the speakers first?
Okay, we'll go with speakers first. Debbie Kelly, followed by Dr. Joshua Smith. Are you still awake?
I'm hanging in there if you are. Well, thank you, I am Deborah Kelly, I'm the Senior Director of Advocacy with the American Lung Association in California, and I, I work here in San Diego County, and thank you so much for the opportunity to address you on this issue that we see as really I will say, first of all, looking at the health issues of hookah use, they're actually pretty clear, scientists have been taking a look at measuring how much tar and nicotine is actually going from the tobacco into the body of the user, and it can be very similar to smoking a cigarette, in fact, about ninety-five percent of the nicotine that's in the hookah tobacco actually makes its way into the body of the smoker, so that, that creates a scenario that's really conducive to addiction. And so obviously with the nicotine and the tars going into people who smoke, the health risks of hookah use would be expected to be kind of similar to cigarette smoking, and they actually are. It's associated with lung cancer, respiratory disease, heart disease, the very things that we all know that cigarette smoking does. Now, you're going to be hearing from Josh about the impact that hookah use is having on the youth here in California, and I'm not going to discuss that, but I will say that from the point of view of the American Lung Association, the American Cancer Society, the American Heart Association, we are deeply, deeply concerned about this trend, and so I hope that you'll pay attention to what his remarks are going to be. Now, I'd also like to say that the American Lung Association has the Technical Assistance Contract with the County of San Diego to provide information to whoever, members of the public businesses, about state, federal, local smoking laws, and so, for example, we get many requests for information from people who are considering opening up hookah lounges, adding hookah smoking to their facility and so forth, and so we've had to do a lot of research into what state law says, what, how court decisions have interpreted state law in terms of different kinds of tobacco use, and then, of course, we also look at what are the laws in place in the local community, and I can say that just from the point of view of compliance and enforcement, from being practical, you would be well-advised to just not open the door to hook, outdoor smoking lounges in, on Vista property, and, you know, I, I, you had really good reasons for banning the lounges indoors, you are one of the only communities, first community in California that has done it, but you're not going to be the last, because it's really, there's some problems in law. I'd just like to close by saying, we see this as Pandora's Box, and you're lucky because you have, you can decide to open the box, or you can decide to keep it closed. We want to give you an, an idea of what you would see inside the box if you were to open it, and we hope you don't do that, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
She wants to, he has a question for you. Come back, come back.
Yes.
Have you ever been into a hookah place?
Yes.
Before that?
I ha, I have actually been in one in the, I can't think of the name, I want to call it the Zodiac Lounge, Pacific Beach. I, I'm not a smoker, but I had somebody with me who was an ex-smoker, and we tried it out, we learned how, how it sold, the claims that are typically made by the server, for example, we were told, you know, we had this giant menu of options, and, you know, they put the, what they call the shisha in the top of the hookah, and they light a piece of charcoal underneath it, and so initially what you get is kind of, it vaporizes the fumes, these things are soaked in alcohol, liquor, and things like that, it vaporizes the fumes from that, you don't initially, the tobacco itself isn't burning yet, but, and you can also add ice to this, kind of cool down the smoke to make it a little bit easier on people who aren't used to smoking, and so, but eventually, the tobacco does begin to combust, and the hookah fills with smoke, it actually produces quite a bit of secondhand smoke, and when we were there, we were told that it wasn't tobacco, there were no warning labels, we were given incorrect information, it's very, very much a highly unregulated substance, and, you know, because it's so exotic, because it can be a social experience, because it can appeal to kids who wouldn't dream of smoking a cigarette, it has opened the door to other forms of tobacco use. So, yes, I'm not an expert in hookah use, but I've tried it, I, I didn't like it, but I can see why some kids would.
Do you live, do you live in the city of Vista?
I do not live in the city of Vista.
Councilmember Gronky has a question also.
You know, it doesn't really matter if you live in the city of Vista or not, what does matter is, is this, could this potentially be addictive as, as tobacco then?
Yes, absolutely, and one of the things that we see, you know, because nicotine is the addictive substance in tobacco, and because people are smoking, inhaling the nicotine, whether it's from a hookah, or it's from a cigarette or whatever, it is absorbed by the lungs very quickly and goes to the brain in seven and eight seconds, and, you know, the younger that brain is... And, you know, the younger that brain is, if it's a teenage brain that's happening to use it, teenage brains become addicted to it very quickly, and we're certainly seeing a lot of trickle-down use from older young adults, for whom it's legal to use it, to teens who are entranced with it and kind of sneak it. Another thing I will say that we've seen with the proliferation of hookah establishments in the city of San Diego, I'm sorry to say, is enforcement issues, because I personally witnessed a group of, it was probably maybe six, I'm, I'm older, everyone looks young to me, but kids who, who should have been carded. Each one of them, each one of them should have been carded by the person who was serving them the tobacco, but only the person who ordered the hookah pipe was carded, and then everyone else would take, you know, the pipes, the little things, I can't think what they're called, and they were not carded, and so, it becomes an issue for enforcement. And I, I just see no value in, in allowing it, and I think certainly the long-term trend in California, this city's been really progressive in the kinds of...
Can I ask you another question?
Sure, absolutely.
About sanitation. The one that appears on the screen here only has, I think, one pipe, if you will, or one, whatever you'd want to call it.
You know the cost.
So, so they come with a variety, that you can have several different pipes coming out of it?
Yes, they come in small, you know, small sizes, large sizes. If you were to go into a hookah bar, you would see, you know, you might see the tubes, if you will, actually organized by flavor, because they might sell pineapple, blackberry, a lot of flavored, a lot of sweet tobacco. I mean, in other countries, there's, they've seen uptakes in tuberculosis and diseases spread that way, because there's no, there's no requirement that these are cleaned or sterilized, and they're usually not. You know, that's not the biggest issue as far as we're concerned, but there's, there's a lot of, it's just another reason to not permit this.
That's another concern of mine. What's, what's the sanitation consideration? Do they, do they change the smoking device?
I would say, from what I've seen, most of the places will, will change the mouthpieces.
Yes.
And those will typically be disposable. The problem, though, as you can imagine, is you're breathing in through, you know, an apparatus that lots of people have been breathing in, that mold is, you know, there's, it becomes moist, mold begins to grow, you know, and there are no, there, we work with the county of San Diego, as I said, there aren't actually any health laws in effect for it.
So, so they change it after every patron?
I mean, I can't say. I mean, they'll change the, they'll, the ones that I've seen will get rid of the disposable mouthpieces, but the other part is reused.
Okay. Okay. I guess then that's all for, and then Dr. Joshua Smith?
Mayor, Councilman, good evening. My name is Dr. Joshua Smith. I'm an epidemiologist from the University of California, San Diego, and I want to talk to you a little bit about hookah. We've done a great job in this country, in this state, at reducing cigarette use. It's going way down, but hookah use is increasing dramatically, especially among young people. And the reasons for this are twofold. One, it's this belief that hookah is somehow not as dangerous as cigarettes, and that's, that's just not true. Scientific evidence has shown that hookah causes the same deadly diseases that cigarettes cause. And in fact, the World Health Organization estimates that an average hookah smoking session, which is about an hour, is equivalent to about 100 cigarettes. Let me think about that. 100 cigarettes worth of smoke in an average hookah smoking session. And the second reason that we're seeing this boom in hookah smoking is the existence of hookah lounges themselves. And I want to talk to you a little bit, I got two pieces of paper. One had some, some facts on, and the other is the highlights of a survey that I did last year on about 700 high school students in the cities of La Mesa, Escondido, and here in Vista. And so, what we found is, was astonishing to us. We found that about one in every four of these high school students had reported that they'd ever smoked a hookah. This is the highest rate of hookah smoking ever reported amongst high school students in the United States. We found about the same amount, one in four knew of a hookah lounge in either the community they went to school, or the community they lived in. 15% of the students that were surveyed reported that they'd actually been to a hookah lounge, and 13, about 13% of those under the age of 18, reported that they'd been to a hookah lounge. So, this represents illegal visitation to hookah lounges, because you have to be 18 to be in there. Now, amongst, amongst those that smoke hookah, about 22% of them reported that they learned about the existence of hookah by seeing a hookah lounge. So, these are people that may not have ever smoked hookah in the first place if they hadn't seen a hookah lounge. Okay, and about one-fourth of the hookah smokers report that the place where they usually go to smoke hookah is a hookah lounge. And then, I just want to, one other thing, we did ask all of these high school students to rank four tobacco products in order of most dangerous to least dangerous, and overwhelmingly, they believe that hookah to be the least dangerous tobacco product, less dangerous than cigars, smokeless tobacco, and cigarettes. And so, this, this has been published in a, in a major medical journal, and I'd be happy to, and there's way more results than this. I'd be happy to talk to you about the results of it in further detail at another time, I know we're running out of time here. But the takeaway here is that hookah smoking is here in Vista at the high school level at the, in those less than age 18, and the role of the hookah lounge in that initiation can't be denied.
Do you have any idea?
Do you know where these students in Vista are going to hookah lounges? Have you any idea?
No, because most, for most of them, it wasn't the community they went to school, it was the community they've lived. And so, I'm guessing if there's no hookah lounges in Vista, they, they've come from other cities.
What is the nearest hookah lounge to where we are right now?
There actually aren't very many very close.
There's one in the county that's just outside of San Marcos, based on my research. It's the only one in North County that I'm aware of.
Now, you say just...
Escondido doesn't allow them, I know that.
Just outside of San Marcos, in city limits, or out of city limits?
I believe it's outside the city limits in the county. I can give you the address if you want to go check it out.
I was, and I, I told Councilman Lopez once, he asked me about hookah lounges, I said, "I saw a lot of them in Turkey." We were in Istanbul one time, and when you walk along the harbor, every other establishment is a hookah lounge, and it, it was not pleasant to walk by, because I don't smoke and don't care to, you know, for the, those, those fumes, but, and look what's happening in Turkey.
Gina Knutson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Gina Knutson, and I'm the Program Manager for the Tobacco Control Program at Vista Community Clinic. And hookahs are no longer a cultural expression, but have been adopted by young adults and teens here in California. As you heard repeatedly from the two previous speakers, hookah tobacco contains the same chemicals found in all tobacco, including nicotine, carcinogens. Hookah tobacco smoke penetrates deeper into the user's respiratory tract, making it more dangerous than cigarettes. Plus, they share the hookah mouthpieces, as you heard from Debbie. I don't know if all hookah lounges are changing the tips. I don't know if, you know, they, they have the restrictions there for the health and safety standards, but there is the potential to pass communicable diseases among that if the tips aren't being changed. So, that's a concern as a public health person in perspective. In California, state law does not allow smoking in workplaces, restaurants, and bars. These bans have helped to reduce the state's smoking rate from about 25% in 1989 to about 12% in 2010, saving both lives and money here in the state of California. Protection from exposure to secondhand smoke is only for enclosed areas of workplaces, such as restaurants, and does not extend to outdoor areas exposing both workers and patrons alike to secondhand smoke. The U.S. Surgeon General has stated in two reports that there's no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke, and this includes hookah smoke. And the California Environmental Protection Agency lists secondhand smoke as a toxic air contaminant, known to cause cancer in humans. In 2007, Stanford University published a study which confirmed the risk of exposure to secondhand smoke at sidewalk cafes and other outdoor settings. Being within a few feet of tobacco smoke may expose people to air pollution levels that are comparable, on average, to indoor levels that were measured in previous studies of taverns and homes. All this research shows that allowing smoking, this includes hookahs outdoors, is just as unhealthy as allowing them indoors. Banning smoking on outdoor dining patios is a trend throughout California, with 85 cities, including the city of Los Angeles, and five counties with these types of policies. Six cities here in San Diego County also have these ordinances, and these cities include National City, Chula Vista, Oklahoma, Del Mar, Solana Beach, and Encinitas. Solana Beach Deputy Mayor Joe Collegian is a strong advocate for smoke-free policies and is American Lung Association's 2011 Clean Air Circle Honoree. He was recently quoted in the North County Times Community Forum stating that smoke-free outdoor dining in Solana Beach has been a positive experience, and he's eager to see other cities benefit as well. Here's a quote from Mr. Collegian, "Nothing kills a great dining experience quicker than inhaling secondhand smoke. Please protect the health, safety, and welfare of Vista's residents, patrons, workers, and visitors by considering not only a ban on hookah in restaurants, but also smoke-free outdoor dining patios." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Councilwoman Lopez, and followed by...
I would like to ask all three of you if smoking cigarettes is less danger than smoking hookahs. Which is more dangerous? And be honest about it.
For heaven's sake.
Huh?
It's all a matter of exposure. Yeah. You have to come up to the microphone.
I think I'd know that by now. It's getting late.
Yeah, so, it, it's a matter of exposure. So, smoking two packs of cigarettes a day is going to be more dangerous than smoking half a pack of cigarettes a day. Looking at it in an equivalency, somebody who is smoking hookah every day, is a daily user of hooker, hookah, excuse me, is smoking about the equivalent of 10 cigarettes a day. And, you know, one of the reasons you've heard the figure of 100 cigarettes is because there's a large quantity of tobacco, and it tends to be replenished, because there might be, you know, four to eight people smoking that tobacco at once. I think another thing that should be pointed out is, is to, when, when a place, you know, permits hookah smoking on its outdoor patio, or whatever, that's the reason people are there. It's not as though they're eating their meal and somebody lights up a cigarette afterwards. These are whole groups of people who are coming there specifically to engage in this dangerous activity. That creates a really bad example for our youth, and, and so, I just think that that should be kept in mind. But I, I will say that there's really no reason that if you, if you smoke the same amounts of hookah tobaccos as cigarettes, that the health risks wouldn't be the same.
More? No. Okay, then I have Councilmember Aguilera, Mayor Portemaguilera, followed by Councilmember Gronky.
I don't hear a whole lot of support for something like this. Doesn't seem like it's an appropriate thing for us to endorse, especially after hearing about the youth that are attracted to this. I mean, I'm looking at these hookah things, and, or communal pipes, I guess, and it looks like a big bong, so, I don't know why we'd want to encourage our kids to be involved with this, and I can't see supporting this.
That would be Councilmember Gronky.
I'm sure we're clearing the floor.
Oh, you're not. There you go.
Mr. Conley, are we talking about tonight restricting this, or can we restrict it exclusively, so that we, that we don't have to have a hookah lounge in our city at all?
We're requesting clarification from the council if they want to consider allowing it as an accessory use. We already restricted it as a primary use, so you couldn't open a hookah bar in Vista that was exclusively hookah. There have been requests from some business owners that want to do it as a part of their business, and so, our initial answer has been no, but we want to confirm that that's the council's direction, and we'll bring back an ordinance to, to codify that.
So, if we make a decision to restrict it with its primary, secondary, whatever it may be, we as a council have the opportunity to restrict it in our city?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coles.
I want to compliment the reports that were given to us, because I think they were very forthright and factually based and, and research-based. One of the best features of the reports was that there is a decline in smoking habitually in our nation, especially here in California. I mean, I, growing up in the 50s, everybody smoked, and it was just a part of your life. Smoking and non-smoking sections on the plane were separated by a seat.
Yeah, I remember.
The, so, anyway, thank you for those, those good and timely reports. I, I would also be, I would be encouraged to look at, if anything, further restricting and following some of the patterns established by some of the other cities in our county, at least addressing the issue of outdoor smoking in dining areas. I'm, I'm open to, to considering that. But I'm definitely in favor of restricting or prohibiting the outdoor, or the accessory lounges.
Is that a motion?
That's, if it takes a motion, that's my motion.
I guess, motion and a second. I would, I would agree with them, being that I have, I have two grandsons, 17 and 19, and I have, they have two cousins who are actually younger than that, and one's 19 and one's 16, and they have smoked hookah. And I'm like, "What?" So, don't know where they did it, but I'm against it.
It's not going to be here.
So, I'm with you there, so. We have a motion and a second, so can we cast our votes? Okay. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. Is everybody awake still? Okay, I think we're, where are we? Let me look at my thing here. Okay, we're to oral communications. Do we have anybody?
There's nobody left for...
Alejandro Sanchez, is he here still? Okay, I think he's gone home. Thank goodness. And, let's see, so we have remarks. I'll start with Councilwoman Lopez. You got remarks? Hello? Hello? Frank, do you have any remarks?
We had a real funny one right now.
Want to share it?
No. Thank you, Rita, for all the work you've done here for the city of Vista, and I think Dale will really enjoy your retirement, but retire. And go and enjoy your life, and spend time with your family, and, because we're not here very long, and so, enjoy it. That's all I have to say.
Councilmember Coles.
We'll keep it short. We've been here long enough, but Rita, I know that, on, on record, anyway, this will be your last meeting. Is it, if we have to have another meeting in December, will you, will you be here?
Sure, sure. I'd be happy to be here.
You don't have to be. But we'll have, we have other opportunities coming up to wish you well and wish you goodbye, so I'll save my most emotional remarks for then.
Thank you.
But it's been a nice entry into the holiday season, going to the tree lighting and some of the new events and activities going on downtown. Thank you, Mario, for doing that. You guys did a good job, and now I look forward to getting home to a bowl of chicken noodle soup.
Mayor Portemaguilera, for the last time, maybe?
Looking for dinner. Yeah, I want to congratulate Rita on her retirement, and hopefully, this is the last meeting for you. I know we tried, but it looks like it would be. But I appreciate all your hard work, your dedication to the city, and all the help you give all of us on council, and we're certainly going to miss you. So, I know we have other times to speak as well, so I'll keep it short. Thank you.
Councilmember Gronky.
Coming into the Christmas season, I think they did a really nice job down, and you'd be commended for the, what the VBBA did for the tree lighting and Santa Claus, just, just everybody raved about it. The same thing with the parade. I heard really good things about the parade, so I just think we're doing really good things for our city when it comes down to the season. As for Ms. Geltzer, it's been a long road, you and I.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you for everything. And again, as others said, I'll probably say some words for later on, but publicly, you're the best. You're the best manager.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I would, I would second that. Yeah, I wanted to say the VBBA, you did a great, Frank, was that your horse that pulled the carriage?
That horse that was of the VBBA, I sold the mother to that horse. And that was, her mother was the first filly that was born here in Vista way back 25 years ago, and I sold it to that young lady, and she produced, they produced that foal that's there.
It's a beautiful horse.
Wasn't really a flashy one, you know, and it's just-
Oh, no, it was a beautiful horse.
You know, but it, but people really enjoyed that, and it gave a great atmosphere to that downtown, and she said that she's willing to come next year, but she's going to bring a bigger wagon, so she can carry a lot of people in it at one time.
Yeah, because of the long, long line for them.
And she'll bring a pair, a pair of them for next year, if they have her, so, but I, the, the Christmas thing there, I believe it was one of the biggest ones they've had.
It's my turn.
I know, but you've asked me.
I know. I just get the horse. You want the horse.
But it was the biggest, biggest one they've ever had, I think. Thank you.
No, I'm just teasing you, it was really great, and I thought, you know, the, was it a wagon or a carriage? I thought that was great, and on Santa Claus, the line was long for that, it was, it was just, you did a great job this year, I thought that was really nice down there, so, and as far as Ms. Geltzer goes, I, I'm sure I'm going to have lots more to say if I can just get through without crying. That's all, when I start thinking about it, then I get all sad, so, but Patrick will do a great job, I'm, you know, looking forward to working with him, and then I know that it'll be fun for you to be off and not have to get up every day and come to work, and be able to take a few trips with your husband, and I think it'll be very nice for you, so.
Ms. Ritter?
Yes?
How many years have you worked with Rita?
Thirteen, I just finished my 13th year. I know, I said, she's like, remember my family?
Yeah, that's, that's great.
Like, my sister's leaving. So, and, and somebody, actually, somebody today called me Rita again, what are they going to do when you're gone? And it was a person at my office, at Cole Banker Office, they said, hi Rita, and I'm like, you gotta be kidding, Rita doesn't even work here.
I don't think you'll be called Patrick, though.
No, I don't think they'll call me Patrick.
I would like to add and say that I, I was going to, the legislative session ended in September, we had, you know, state budget goes on with all of the trials, they're out a billion dollars, and so they're enacting cuts for the, and mostly in education, that are going to be effective in January, but they didn't at least cut K through 12 in the primary education cycle. Redevelopment, we may know something in the next two weeks, if we do, we may have a short little, quick special meeting-
Again.
-based on, before the actions to be effective January 1st, or they may not make the decision and wait till right before January 15th, when we have to make our next extortion payment.
Yeah.
But I, I can't tell you what a pleasure it's been, I, I've, as I've stated before, we, I've had the, the pleasure to work with a number of cities up and down the state, and worked with, we have 491 cities in the state of California, and I've worked with quite a number of them, and that number of city managers, and the discussions that they have about issues that they have before their cities and their city councils, and, and Mr. Piper also, we've both been on the California City Management Foundation Board for many years, Mr. Piper longer, and I'm looking at, one of the reasons that he certainly came to this city was because of the integrity of the council, and making decisions and looking out for what's best for the community. And that's the kind of community that I always wanted to work in and stay in, and would not have stayed if there hadn't been a council that, that did such things, and that looked at how they made decisions, and how they wanted to make always a better community to work, live, and play, and that's what you've done, and it's been my honor and my pleasure to work with all of you. Thank you, good night, Merry Christmas, and the holiday season has been wonderful, the Christmas parade-
We shared Merry Christmas, did we?
The Christmas, the Christmas parade was, was great, and the, and the VBBA festivities, and it's just, it looks so nice, the bridge is all lit up, so happy holidays to all, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you. We just have Mr. Piper.
Well, it's nice to be necessary.
Yeah, and you are.
I second every, everything that everyone had to say about Rita, and obviously we'll have another opportunity, but I also want to thank the council, it's been a very good year, and I've appreciated, enjoyed working with each and every one of you, and I wanted to summarize by saying, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year.
Thank you. With that, unless Mercy has anything to say, is she on there? Kathy down there? No? Okay, so then, we are adjourned at 9:33. Can you believe it?